Everybody here, I'm sorry for starting a little bit late this evening. Welcome to our last council meeting of 2024. Thank you for coming. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 19th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the DAS and return it thereafter.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet, here. Mr. Miniger.
Here.
Mr. Pulowski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Present.
President McTiernan.
Present. All right, at this time, we have our Pledge of Allegiance. We've got a special evening tonight as is the last council meeting of a couple of our members, and so I thought it was appropriate to call on Ms. Megan Vartan to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(laughter) You're right, that is my call. (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice work, dear.[93.22][93.22](laughter)
All right, at this time, Madam Clerk, would you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV, on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the closed session and regular meeting notes of December 3rd, 2024?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. May also have a motion to approve the special closed-session meeting of December 11th, 2024.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. And last but not least, a motion to approve the Capitol Budget Workshop minutes of December 11th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, Council President, I was not there, so I guess whatever that would be abstained? Or recuse? Recuse? Thank you.
All right, awesome. All right, at this time, we're on our reports section of our meeting. We're gonna start off, as always, with our esteemed Mayor, Mayor Fagan.
Thank you, Council President. So first, I'm gonna start with a drone update because I know it's on everybody's minds. I attended, at a briefing I attended yesterday online, provided by the White House, the FAA, the FBI, and the Department of Homeland Security, I received an update on the drone concerns in New Jersey. They asked that hobbyists not fly to drones or try to track things they see in the air as that's more confusing and adds to the number of reports they're receiving. They also asked that people don't try to shoot down anything they believe to be a drone or aim lasers at any aircraft because some of the reports have turned out to be manned aircraft, and a laser to the eyes of the pilot could be harmful to their vision and/or cause a crash. They also stated that they have used geospatial overlaying to vet the over 5,000 reports they have received, and they've not found anything anomalous over civilian airspace. And finally, the FBI in Newark, the field office in Newark, said they'll be posting information to help residents differentiate between manned aircrafts and drones or unmanned aircrafts. I haven't seen that yet. When we see that, we can post that link. I did submit a few questions through our Executive Director of the New Jersey League of Municipalities, because he's our, he was my conduit, and because they ran out of time for questions. So I'm awaiting the answers to those questions, and I will certainly share any new information that I receive. The 2025 Organization Meeting of Common Council will be held on Tuesday, January 7th, at 7:30 here in council chambers. We will be swearing in our new council members, recognizing our retiring council members and city volunteers, and I will provide my State of the City address. Members of the public are invited to attend the meeting and the reception, which will be held in the main lobby outside council chambers at 7:00 PM before the meeting. If you'd like to attend the reception, please RSVP by December 26th to cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. For the MABI Playground Transformation Project, we have an opportunity for the community to help fund the MABI Playground Transformation Project, which will be Summit's first fully ADA-accessible and sensory-friendly playground, and include an intergenerational park to serve the needs of all community members. Through grants, we have about a half of the funding needed for it, and as an additional fundraiser, the Department of Community Programs is providing an opportunity for residents to donate a bench or game table or purchase an inscribed brick paver. Those who want to donate can register online via the Civic Rec Portal, call the Summit Department of Community Programs to pay over the phone, or visit the community center in person. Congregation Ora Shalom will host the annual menorah lighting ceremony on Sunday, December 29th, at 6:00 PM on the Village Green. Members of the public are invited to attend. And lastly, with this being our last meeting of the year, I wanted to wish everyone happy holidays. I hope everyone has a happy and healthy rest of 2024 and a wonderful holiday season, and I'm looking forward to seeing everyone again in the new year at the organizational meeting. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, our Acting City Administrator, Ms. Baldwin, you have any comments?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. There's a few changes in the schedule for the holidays here at City Hall. City offices will close at 12:00 PM on December 24th and will be closed on December 25th and January 1st. The transfer station will also close at noon on December 24th and will be closed on December 25th as well. The 25th and the 1st of January are also parking holidays in Summit, so enjoy shopping and parking free. There is no recycling collection on Christmas and New Year's Day, and all following collections for those weeks will be pushed to the next day. There is no change to trash collection on Christmas and New Year's, and full details for all the city's scheduled changes and closures for the upcoming holidays are available on the homepage of the city website. Additionally, for those who were not able to attend our Capitol Budget Workshop, there will be a preliminary Capitol Budget presentation document posted to our website that will be posted tomorrow. I appreciate everybody's patience. We had to work out a couple glitches with the new software, so what you will see in this document is that it looks very different from previous documents for our Capitol Budget Workshop. There is a very detailed section. It goes over 300 pages, so if you wanted to look at every single project in detail, future, past, and present, you can. I don't know that everybody wants to do that, but I'd say focus on the 2025 projects. As I stated in the Capitol Workshop, this will be an interactive document, which I think is really exciting for residents as they toggle around and click on things, they'll be able to see more details. That function will be enacted when we have completed the Capitol Plan. Right now, it is a preliminary plan. Everything was presented by the department heads and their recommendations. That will be tweaked over the next few weeks, and once it's finalized as a plan that will go into our budget, then you'll see the interactive option, but all of the details are there if you choose to peruse in that document, and that will come tomorrow. Lastly, many of you may have gotten a NICSIL, and for those who didn't, Bristol-Myers Squibb will be performing boiler testing at the 556 Morris Avenue location during daytime hours for the remainder of the week, so you can expect to see steam in the area. There's no cause for alarm. The police department did put out the NICSIL, and they are aware of this. And with that, I'd just like to wish everybody happy and healthy holidays to all those who live, work, and play in Summit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Council President, report. Just have a couple of things. One, I, as people are aware who've tuned in, we've been actively looking for a new city administrator over the last couple of months. We've conducted a process where we had almost 20 resumes that we saw. We narrowed it down. We conducted a pretty intense interviews with a handful of these people where we had every elected official, incoming elected officials, department heads, all vetting various candidates, and we got together and we realized the best candidate was sitting across the table from us. And we collectively, I don't know how spontaneous it was, it was pretty spontaneous, that we came to the realization that our best candidate to manage the city for us is Tammy Baldwin. And (applause) Tammy has had experience in that role in the past. She is also our Chief Financial Officer, and some of the people who are applying mentioned her name as the best Chief Financial Officer in the state of New Jersey, so we're super, super lucky to have her there as well. Tammy's going to continue in that role as the CFO because we are, as most people do know, getting into the budget in the first quarter, but officially at the reorg meeting, Tammy will also be appointed as the new business administrator for the City of Summit, and we couldn't be more proud of her. Thank you. Thank you, Tammy. The only other thing in my council report is we are getting, swinging into the holidays. Do the right thing. Call an Uber. Don't get behind the wheel, okay? So have a happy and fun holiday with your family and your friends, and enjoy it, but enjoy it safely. And that is my report. Okay. All right, so we're going on, at this stage, we have our Historical Minute. Councilman Pulowski.
Thank you. Tonight, we welcome Keith Miklis. He is a Summit resident with keen interest in Summit's history and its future, and he fittingly has been waiting two weeks to tell us about the history of Twin Maples, also known as the Fort Nightly Club.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Fagan, Town Council, and all in attendance. It is an honor to present the Summit Historical Minute tonight. My name is Keith Miklis. I am a resident of Summit for three years, volunteer in service through St. Teresa of Alvila Church, the Knights of Columbus, the Elks Homeless Veterans Initiative, and Grace. I am a card-carrying member of the Summit Public Library and a member of the Historical Society. The topic for tonight is the Twin Maples Estate, owned and operated by the Fort Nightly Club. These are two separate entities, and I'll speak to them separately. So Part One, the Twin Maples Estate, which you see on the screen up here, this is Twin Maples, they're located down on Springfield Avenue, just before you go down the hill. It is a Union County four-century site. Circa 1900, the land was sold to James Foley, a prominent New York attorney who commissioned architect Alfred Norris to build Twin Maples. Mr. Foley and his wife Carolyn Davis occupied the house until his death in 1916, and in 1908, construction on the house was completed. In 1918, it was then sold to Mr. and Mrs. Frederick N. Collins. Frederick Collins was president of James E. Ward and Company, steamship agents and brokers, and was known in downtown Manhattan as the Sugar King for bringing sugar as cargo from the Caribbean. Collins had one child, Lydia, and conducted a lively household entertaining extensively until Frederick's death in 1947 at the age of 90. The house gained its historical status in 1996 and is listed on the New Jersey and National Registers of Historic Places. So Part Two, the Fort Nightly Club, which owns Twin Maples. In 1949, the Twin Maples Estate was sold to the Fort Nightly Club for $27,000. The Fort Nightly is a women's organization dedicated to community service and outreach. In 1893, the Fort Nightly Club was formed by the wife of Summit's first mayor. They had met on a fortnight, that's every 14 nights, or every two weeks they meet. The members are a diverse group of professional women, stay-at-home moms, and retirees who share a commitment to volunteerism and community service. They have a rich history of charitable contributions, community service, and support of the arts. A small sampling includes, in 1897, they donated horse trousers. In the Great Depression, they set up a sewing room and donated 3,000 garments to those in need. They sponsored the first visiting nurse here to Summit, created the Art Foundation, a precursor to the Summit Art Association, built the first playground in Summit, and built the first playground. The club's dedication to the community continues. They now award scholarships, offer knitting courses, learning to play mahjong, and outings to the Paper Mill Playhouse. They offer many volunteer opportunities and are accepting new members. And so together, the space is available now for events, receptions, and memorial services. At other times, Ballroom Dance of New Jersey utilizes the space for dance lessons, and you can see the websites for Twin Maples, the Fort Nightly, or Ballroom Dance New Jersey if you want more information. In closing, thank you very, very much for the opportunity to speak tonight, in particular, Heather Althoff, President of the Fort Nightly Club, Lori Dahl from both the Fort Nightly and the Summit Historical Society, Abby Brady from the Summit Free Public Library, and Sergey and Olga from Ballroom Dance New Jersey. Good night. May this holiday season bring peace, health, and prosperity to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.[1049.48][1049.48](applause) Could you just make sure the clerk gets your prepared statement? Thank you. All right, awesome.
Thank you.
All right, today, we do have a presentation. Chief Segorsky is gonna give us an update on kind of year-end statistics on public safety in our fair city, so it's time, chief.
I'd be lying if I didn't say, at the beginning of 2024, I didn't have on my bingo card Councilman McTiernan here, being a councilman and the council president, and Tammy Baldwin, who are, I'd say, administrators. But it's a pleasant surprise, and we are in great hands, and I'm just gonna say that. Good luck. Uh, to you, Council President, thank you for the opportunity to present this year's year-end report for 2024. I'll be providing an overview of the crime trends in our community. I'll be highlighting areas where we've improved, and I'll also highlight some of the areas or identify some of the challenges that we continue to face. Now, do I have control of this?
Is that on? You gotta look at the side there, make sure it's on.
I'll just let you do it.
Okay, I'll help you out. Just let me know in advance.
We'll start out with our calls for service in 2024. These are calls for service and officer-initiated activity. Before I begin the entire presentation, it's important to point out that this is, 2024 obviously isn't over yet. We still have two weeks to go. These 24, 2024 stats are up from January up until December 12th. So at the end of this year, in January, I'll post the updated statistics on our website as always. So our calls for service in 2024 and officer-initiated activities are 49,620. We're on pace to get to about 50,000 calls by the end of the year, calls for service and activities. That would be a slight reduction from the previous year when we had 53,198 calls and activities. You can go to the next one. What do you mean? Okay, the first area we're gonna look at is violent crime. Violent crime in the UCR, it consists of murder, rape, robbery, and aggravated assault. Historically, Summit has consistently experienced very low violent crime. It's, you know, one of the things that makes Summit such a nice place to live, work, and We normally average between eight and 12 total violent crimes annually. The highest number of violent crimes ever reported was in 1994. That was 22, and the lowest was three, reported in 2019. As you see, we have a total in 2024 of 14. This is an increase of three from the previous year, and an increase of seven from 2022. This is something that we'll keep an eye on. It's something that is not of great concern because this violent crime, because we get so little of it, it's a very small sample size. So we do, we have experienced throughout my career where we'll go up by three or four from the previous year, but that normally levels out the following year. But again, it's something that we'll keep an eye on. If you go to the next one. Property crime, in the UCR, the property crime consists of burglary, larceny, which is theft, and motor vehicle theft. This is the area that is, has been, you know, pretty much a great concern to a lot of the residents, especially over the last three to four years, where we've experienced a significant amount of stolen vehicles, residential burglaries, and attempts to enter vehicles. As you see, in 2024, I'm gonna jump down to the motor vehicle theft at the bottom first. We're at 11, that's a reduction of three from the previous year, and it's a 15 reduction from the year before that. This is, you know, this continues to be a trend that started back in 2022. We had, before that, we had 21, I mean, 31 stolen vehicles in 2021, and, you know, we attacked that pretty aggressively, and over the last three years, we were able to significantly knock that down to the 11 that we're at right now. That, I'm gonna jump up to the burglary at 17. This is a significant reduction from 2023 when we had 39. In 2023, one of the consequences of us doing so well with the stolen vehicles, where people, you know, our aggressive approach to policing and the residents buy-in where they were keeping, locking their vehicles and keeping their, taking their key fobs out, there was an unattended consequence of some of these car thieves breaking off and being a little more aggressive and breaking into homes to steal the key fobs. That accounted for about eight of those burglaries. Also, too, in 2023, we, Summit, like a lot of towns in the metro area, experienced a number of residential burglaries committed by these South American burglary crews. That accounted for about, like, close to eight to 10 of those burglaries, and there was a significant increase in, in, what do you call it, commercial burglaries. But in 2020, 2024, we were able to use some of the aggressive patrolling tactics that we used to, you know, combat the stolen car epidemic, and that resulted in a significant decline again from 39 in 2023 to 17 in 2024. The one area where we're up in 2020, 2024, is larceny and thefts. We have, presently, we have 131. We're on pace, we'll probably get about, at the end of the month, up to about 135, so we're gonna have about six to 10 more than we had last year, which is interesting because with the reduction in the burglaries and the reduction in the motor vehicle thefts, and there's also a significant reduction in attempts to enter vehicles, which is not listed on, in the UCR, you know, one would think that the larceny and thefts would be lower, but obviously, they're not. A lot of the larceny and thefts, they account for anywhere from, you know, shoplifting, small amounts, to first, second-degree thefts where large amount, the value is very high. You can go to the next one. So in 2024, the total of crime index, index, that's the total of property crimes and violent crimes, is 173. That's a reduction of 20 off the index from 2023 when we had a total of 193, and a significant reduction from 2022 when we had 208. The crime index is what's used to, what do you call it, calculate crime rates. Go to the next one. With a great deal of our attention focused over the last couple of years on combating, combating the spike in the car thefts and burglaries, we weren't in a position, Summit Police Department, to consistently devote the necessary time and resources to effectively address some of the other concerns of the community, specifically traffic violations, aggressive driving, speeding, and pedestrian safety. Also, a concern to the community is the illegal parking net, especially in our central business district. But with, in 2024, with the reductions in burglaries that I just pointed out before, and a reduction in stolen cars that I just pointed out on a previous slide, and in no small part to the council approving two additional officers, adding to our staffing, we were able to start to attack these problems more aggressively. And as you can see, I can't even see from that distance, but I'm gonna have to look In 2024, we conducted a total of 6,640 motor vehicle stops, up from 6,347 in 2023, and up significantly from 2022 of 6,031 stops. In 2024, we, to date, we've issued 1,880 moving summonses. We've issued, and that is an improvement from 2023 when we issued 1,624, and a pretty significant improvement from 2022 when we issued 1,736. Parking summonses, we made a big improvement there. Again, this is something that we get, we get a lot of complaints on. We issued 3,596 parking summonses. This is almost double what we did last year, and a significantly much increase from 2022. In 2024, that gives us a total of 5,476 summonses, as opposed to 3,416 summonses, total summonses issued in 2023. Okay, not only in the area of traffic enforcement and parking enforcement, there's other concerns of the public that we were able to address that we weren't able to address because our focus was on the stolen cars and the residential burglaries, and that's in the area of quality of life enforcement, especially in the center of our town and in and around the train station. You're gonna see, you know, a pretty significant difference from 2024 to 2023 and 2022. Quality of life enforcement, these consist of violations such as open containers of alcohol, disorderly conduct, you know, which sometimes encompasses smoking in restricted areas of the train station and outside the train station, panhandling, urinating in the public, littering, and offenses like that. In 2024, we issued a total of 110 city ordinance summonses. That is a, that was almost triple. What we issued in 2023, we issued a total of 30, and we just blew away by almost 100 what we issued in 2022, when we issued 11. I'll explain why that is up there in a second. This year, I guess it was sometime in about February or March, the council passed a ordinance, the Resident Protection Ordinance, and I know there was some concern from the public with the passing of that ordinance where they felt that with the passing of that ordinance, where they felt that it was possibly going to lead to implicit bias, lead to residents calling the police on people because of, you know, because of their race. As I indicated when this, when this ordinance was being debated, that I acknowledge that implicit bias is in fact a problem, and it's something that we have to be careful, and it's something that we have to watch, and it's something that could affect when somebody calls the police, when they see something. But it's something that I, that I really didn't believe would affect, would be affected by this ordinance, in my opinion, and, you know, I still hold this opinion, is that if someone, you know, with implicit bias was going to call the police based on somebody's race, this ordinance wouldn't add to, add to that person calling. These people would call regardless of whether that ordinance was in place or not. Just to give you an indication, this is a graph showing suspicious persons, suspicious vehicle, and suspicious activity calls that we received from two thousand twenty. The ordinance was, didn't go into effect until twenty-three months into two thousand twenty-three. And as you see, each year, those calls increased slightly to significantly, from five eighty-eight in two thousand twenty to six seventeen in two thousand twenty-one, to seven sixteen in two thousand twenty-two, to seven fifty-one in two thousand twenty-three. Now, following the passing of the ordinance, the number of these type of calls went up by almost thirty. But again, it's consistent with the, the increase that we had prior to the ordinance being voted on. Well, so another way of, of, you know, to see if, if people were, you know, where implicit bias may have been affected when people called the police because of this ordinance, if you go to the next slide, it shows our internal affairs racial profiling complaints, the number that we received, we haven't received any in two thousand twenty-four since that ordinance been passed. We don't get a lot of these to begin with, but we got one in two thousand twenty-three, two in twenty, three in two thousand twenty-two, two in two thousand twenty-one, and two in two thousand twenty. But again, done in two thousand twenty-four. Since this ordinance was passed, we've issued city ordinance summonses, eight, for eight incidents. It's not, it wasn't eight suspects, it was four suspects, but they broke into, you know, each, each broke into two cars.
That's it for the slides.
That's it, yeah. In closing, I want to thank the members of Summit Police Department for their hard work and dedication. I also extend gratitude to the mayor and council and the community for their ongoing support. Together, we can continue making Summit a safe place to live, work, and visit. Are there any questions?
Questions from council?
I'll save my comments for the end, you know, but I don't, I don't have any question. I just wanted to say, chief, great job this year. Thank you for encouraging the police force, the hires that you've recently had. I just thought that, overall, you've done a really good job, summonses, traffic stops, burglaries, car thefts, you know, the totality of everything, spot on. Thank you.
Through you, council president?
Yes, please.
The, the parking summonses, first of all, thank you for this. This is very, very informative. The parking summonses, did that have anything to do with, can you explain who issued the tickets for those? Is that parking? Is that the police or combination?
No, that is just statistics for the sworn police officers, parking. They probably blew that right out of the water, the number I wrote.
I figured they did. I was, I was expecting to see that. I would actually love to see that number two, but thank you very much.
Yes, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, council president. Chief, thank you very much for, for that. I think you guys, you and your police department have done a wonderful job this year, and I know that we hired two new officers that have been training for probably majority of the year, and looking forward to them, you know, getting acclimated to our town and learning all the streets' names. I was talking to one of them at an event, and he goes, I'm almost there. I'm like, you know, I kind of threw, I kind of threw him a curve ball and asked him, like, where a certain street was, and he was like, uh, so I'm like, all right, you're almost there.
You know, that's, to interrupt you, that's something that, you know, we have to deal with. When I first started, they would quiz you, you know, on your knowledge of the city, but like everybody else, there's a reliance now on GPS. When they get the call, they get directions to the call right on the computer screen. So, you know, that's, that's a dying art, but we're, you know, we want them to brush up on that for sure.
Yeah, he was definitely determined to learn where all the streets were.
And it's a tough town to learn, you know, because when I first came here, I was terrified because the streets, they don't run like city streets normally do, like east to west, north to south. I went on Colt Road for the first time, and I didn't know what to think when I made six lefts and a right, and I was still on Colt Road. This is an interesting.
Well, I actually gave him Bob's number, Bob's street address, so. So thank you for that. I do have a question about the, the larceny. Is there a determination of a certain dollar amount that constitutes larceny, or is it theft?
The grading of a larceny, larceny is a theft of anything with any type of monetary value. You know, disorderly persons is two hundred and fifty dollars and under, and then you have the fourth degrees, don't make me go into all of these because it's been a long time since I charge people, but it goes from then, from two fifty to, gosh, I think a thousand, and then the third degree, and then to second degree. But based on monetary value.
So what, I'm just curious, is the, the majority of the larceny, is it from homes, from individuals on the street, or is it from downtown businesses?
When you say homes, the only larceny that would, anything taken out of a home that would be considered a larceny would be like if, you know, a family member took it, or somebody that worked in the house took it. When you, like, say, for example, when there's a burglary, when somebody breaks into a house and they steal something from the house, if we arrest that person, they'll be charged with burglary, and they'll be charged with the larceny, the theft. But for the UCR purposes, what, the only thing that's tabulated is the most serious offense, and that would be the burglary. So when you see the larcenies up there, that is just, you know, just a theft, no other crime. Again, if a robbery is committed, you know, someone does an armed robbery and they steal money, that's a robbery and a theft that person could be charged with. However, for reporting purposes, it would be reported as the robbery, not the, the larceny.
And I don't mean to get granular on this, but is it something, you know, like, you know, my, my son stole a hundred dollars from my wallet, or something like that? I mean, but I guess I'm trying to figure out, is out of a hundred and thirty-one, where are the majority of these coming from? Is it, you know, down, you know, downtown businesses?
Most of them are the petty larcenies, the disorderly persons offenses. They're not the indictable offenses, that's the fourth degrees and up, you know, petty shoplifting. Also, what counts as larcenies, we had, when you have someone that tries to enter a vehicle and they don't steal anything, that will go down as a larceny because it was an attempt to steal something, so they're included in there as well.
Okay. Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm glad Councilman Mediger actually asked about the parking. Most of these parking violations at night, people walking, you know, parking on the street? Or are they?
Yeah, you know, a lot of the violations, they start probably like during the lunch hour, then it might, you know, calm down a little bit, and then when school gets out, you know, things pick up. This is in the center of town, and then at night, it is just off the hook, you know, starting at like four o'clock up until like eight o'clock. It's like, you know, we use the, you know, the analogy, it's like, you know, trying to shovel snow in a blizzard. We, you know, we wrote double what we wrote last year, but we still have a lot of work to do, you know, up there. If you ask anybody in this room, they probably think we didn't even put a dent in that, even though, you know, we showed that, we put a big dent in it, but what they see out there, it hasn't really affected anything, so we have a lot of work to do yet.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, chief, I appreciate it.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Chief Zagorski. I think those numbers are pretty impressive and the enforcement, so kudos to you. I think we always try to defend you on Facebook when they say it's the Wild West in Summit and we're not enforcing, and, you know, we might be known as the council that enforces the most, but I think that's, that's okay for now. I think the one thing that I'd like to ask for two thousand twenty-five, and, you know, hopefully we can work in safety, is how do we show to the residents that we're working on an active campaign of enforcement? So to give you an example, I spent a lot of time with the crossing guards on Cunbrook Parkway, and then I'll, a resident will ask us to put up a speed study there, and Aaron will come up with the number of cars and the, the amount of speed that they're going, but how do we actually show results and change behavior? So, you know, we put up the sign, and then two days later, do we enforce, enforce, enforce? Because I feel like in, there's certain towns where, once you start enforcing on a campaign or on a street, you start changing the behavior, and everybody knows, when you go down that street, if you're going two miles over, you're going to get a ticket. So like, how does that happen, or can we look to do that? I know we're, we're doing it a lot, but if there's a specific area of a neighborhood that has concerns, can we, can we show some results in that area? And I just want to say thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, I mean, that, we have, that's something that we could put out through our, through the new public relations office, or?
Great.
Sure. But, you know, that, it's, it's a constant thing, really. You know, you can go, like you said, for a few, you know, a few days to a week, and people get the message, and they're like, I got to slow down, but then you have to, you know, almost like, you know, get that, that flu vaccine again, you know, and condition people to.
You can blame me, and I won't get reelected, but I think it's important to make sure that we enforce so these kids don't get run over. I really do.
Council president?
Yes, please, Councilman Boyer.
You know, chief, I think it's important for you to explain to the public, like, what goes into a campaign? We've had conversations about a speeding campaign, right, like real strict enforcement for a duration of a period, right? We talked at length about that. Can you tell the public what goes into preparation, and even financial preparation, that needs to happen, and the bandwidth? Bandwidth, so, we talked about doing a campaign to enforce speeding, right, for a period of time, a week, two weeks, a month, and during that conversation, you brought up some, some points, valid points, especially during transitions with the bandwidth in our police department, right? You need a certain number of police officers that are on duty during that time, there's overtime that's involved. Can you, do you want to explain what goes into this type of enforcement, this type of campaign, possibly something that Councilwoman Hamlet is talking about?
You're talking about the initiative that we were talking, like, in addition to what we're doing now?
That's correct, yes.
That's something I'm really not prepared to get into right now, but, no, I, I'm going to have to.
That's fine, so.
I'm going to pass on that one.
Okay, I'll expand on that for a second, and hopefully, this is something that we can do in two thousand twenty-five to answer your question, Councilwoman Hamlet. The idea was to do a speeding campaign, right, because speeding enforcement is, is very important. We, you know, we get complaints all the time, whether it's on Blackburn, Division, whatever, and we've been looking to do this for a while. However, there's a lot that, that goes into this, as the mayor probably can contest, and I think when we, when we, when we have the relevant bandwidth and everything, that, you know, we can actually do this. I think it's something that I look forward to because speeding is a problem in the city, so.
Yes, please, Madam Mayor.
I do want to, just so that people are clear, there are two separate things. One is what we are doing currently. If we get a complaint or a concern repetitively, our PD will go out and, you know, spend a couple of days, but what, I think what Councilman Boyer is recommending, what we've talked about, is actually something a little bit more global, a little bit more consistent, and it's a much bigger animal. So I just want to say kudos to the police department for actually responding to the concerns, and they are doing that, which is evidenced by the summonses that have been issued and so forth. But I think we are, you know, interested in, in making this a much bigger campaign with, you know, signs that says, listen, you slow down, here's your warning, and making it sort of a blanket over the city. And I think that's something that we're, we're working towards, but in the meantime, it's not as if we're not enforcing and we're not addressing the concerns. We certainly are, and we've done a lot over the past year to, to address that.
And that was the mayor bailing me out because?
You're welcome. You owe me a drink.
In headlights when he asked me that question, which he said.
And then I actually have a question for you. I just wanted to clarify, go back to violent crimes, because that always gets my hair in the back of my neck up a little bit. We talk about sort of where those kind of take place, what typically we see. Can you expand on that just a little bit?
Right, well, this year, for example, with the violent crime, we had fourteen. What had a significant impact on that number was we, there were eight reported rapes that were actually attempted rapes. Now, those are serious crimes, I'm not downplaying that one bit, but I think three to four of those eight took place in the, in a. A recovery, you know, facility for substance abuse. Not that that's okay, but my point that I'm trying to make is, and I make it for all eight attempts, these were, these are attempts where the offender knows the victim, they're not stranger type thing, so they're, you know, they're isolated, basically. Again, I'm not, I'm not, you know, saying that it's okay, or that, you know, it's just that, that's something that you can be reassured by.
Thank you.
I just have one question, chief, and I'll wrap up with comments after everyone else, but could you just explain a little bit about how you integrate technology? I know there was a lot of talk about, you know, technical fencing and things like that, but at least tracking cars, and I know a lot of, you know, auto thefts was led by people coming to town in stolen cars. And what, I know, don't give away the secrets, but how have you integrated that technology and is that something that you think can be expanded upon, or is it something that you're pretty comfortable with the level of tech that you have at the moment?
Well, when we first, when I started seeing a spike in stolen cars, I became acting chief in two thousand twenty-two, and, you know, the council and the mayor then were very responsive, they wanted to give, they said they want to give me whatever I need to help combat this, and what we proposed was installing that geo-fence in Summit with license plate readers, where we wanted to install them at every entrance and exit point in town. License plate readers, they're not, you know, a magic bullet, a solution, but they, they do help in this endeavor. You know, when the car has been reported stolen before they enter town, with the license plate leaders, readers, it will give us an alert to let us, let us know that, that that car is in town. And when that happens late at night in a town like ours, to get a heads up like that, and then to point to a certain area where we could just, you know, draw units on it, you know, that's quite an advantage. And we also, in two thousand twenty-two, got those license plate readers installed in all of our radio cars, too. Council approved, you know, a funding for that. The license plate readers, back in two thousand twenty-two, we did it with a two-phase capital project, where half the town was going to get done in two thousand twenty-three, which happened, and then, and this past year, this, this council passed the second part of that, where the rest of the town was completed. So right now, we are in a good place with the LPR readers. Now, we would like to expand with that, where you could actually, you know, we have it, LPRs coming in and leaving town. We like to get LPRs also, you know, throughout the town. This way, you could identify exact, you know, even pinpoint even closer, you know, where some of these cars are or where they've been. You know, also, we want to improve our camera technology. We do have some cameras in the center of our town, but they're, you know, presently outdated, and we want to, to improve that as well.
Thank you. Councilman Palowski.
I'll be brief. Just want to thank you and the entire force for all of your hard and good work. We really appreciate it.
Other comments? Councilman Boyer, you want to make one?
No, I'll be, no.
All right, I'll, I'll wrap up then with a comment. Again, thank you, chief, to you and all the other police officers here in Summit. You know, one of the biggest, or a key role of government is safety. It's one of the first things that government is there to do, is to keep their citizens safe, and you guys are the tip of the spear, so to speak, in doing that. So I appreciate all the hard work that you do and all your officers do, so thank you. You know, I've kind of just sort of parachuted in here a few months ago, but as a non-elected or as a private citizen, it's one thing that I noticed, you know, things had changed, and what, I would talk to my friends or people, people were concerned that there was a rising tide of particularly home burglaries. We've kind of, I'd hate to say, grown numb to the. of, I'd hate to say grown numb to the, to the car thefts issue. And I'm glad that people are reacting now and changing their behavior, and, and that's helping curb that. But what was disturbing is this, this idea that there was not much we could do about burglaries. Oh, New Jersey, you know, we live in, it's, it's happening everywhere. I think I heard that comment multiple times. And I really do applaud this council for saying, no, we do not need to accept that. We can do something about this. We're, at least we're going to try. And, and I think the ordinance you guys passed earlier in the year, you know, you send a signal that, no, it is not okay to come to our town and break into our homes. And we are going to do something about it. And I, I'm very happy to see the statistics that you showed about, you know, you're right, you mentioned, is there bias issues with that? I'm glad to see that that really hasn't happened. So there, you know, and I get, there's people with legitimate fears around that, and those fears should be addressed. And I'm glad the data shows that, at least from that, at least for now, those fears haven't come to fruition. But we have seen a drop in burglaries, and that's great. And again, we should be happy about that. And I, and I know just, I'm glad I see it in statistics, because I know anecdotally, I don't get told these things anymore. You know, you used to hear about one or two every weekend. And that doesn't happen now. So again, congratulations, Chief. I know we have, you know, one burglary is too much, and we want to keep doing this. But I applaud you and your officers for doing a great job.
Thank you, thank you for your support. If I could just close with, we are, you know, trending in a good place with burglaries and stolen cars. We've come a long way. But I, I really question everybody to be, still be vigilant. We, just the other, I guess it was over the weekend, we had an attempt over near the Beacon Hill Club. The vehicle, our LPR hit on that. They were able to get out of town, unfortunately. But that vehicle was used in a attempt to enter an occupied dwelling in, in Melbourne, Short Hills, that same evening. So this is still happening. So we have to be vigilant. You know, this is not something, this is going to be an ongoing thing, unfortunately. It's the world we live in. But we are trending in the right direction, and we are, and we are in a pretty good place, and I'm real happy about that.
Thank you.
Council President, real quick, I'm sorry. On Chief, on that note, how do we compare to other towns? I remember in a previous, previous council meeting, you had said that, you know, in Summit, you know, we're trending in the right direction, and we're doing a lot better than other towns, right? So what's your, your estimation on that?
Well, to do a comparison, that'd be kind of hard. And I, you know, I wouldn't want to say we're doing a lot better than other towns. What I will say is, and what I said at the last meeting was, that, you know, we, we're showing, you know, our efforts have resulted in a reduction, but these things are still occurring around us. Not to say that other towns aren't doing a good job. I'm just pointing out that they, they haven't packed up and gone to another state or something. This is happening still. It's happening around us. We, we have just been fortunate that the efforts that we've made, you know, have, you know, resulted in positive results.
Very good, Chief. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your service. I appreciate you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Chief. All right. We're going to get into our resolution section of our, our meeting at the moment. And we're going to start with finance. Council, Councilman Miniger, finance number one.
Thank you, Council President. This is number, I think, 11643, transfer appropriations. And this resolution authorizes the intra-budget transfer of appropriations from accounts with a surplus to those that are over. This is a regular occurrence in the last two months and first three months of a fiscal year, of our fiscal year, and this particular set of transfers totals $120,000. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, I believe we need to take a roll call on this. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
Council President McTernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, finance number two. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11662, and this is a request by Hometown Television to modify the agreement with the city from 25% of franchise fees paid to HTV to a flat payment in the amount of $84,000. I do need to mention that this is equivalent to 31.25% of the franchise fees, and would equal a 20% increase in the cost of these services. I need to request, on behalf of this council, some additional information. And the information I'm requesting here will allow us to do a reasonable level of due diligence on this request, which right now I do not think is possible. The city needs to treat this like any other service agreement or contract. We scrutinize these things pretty well. So I want you to think back on the multiple times this year where we authorized the renewal or extension of a contract where the fee remained completely flat upon renewal. And we still discussed, rightfully so, the idea of reviewing all contracts every two to three years, and actually going out to bid for those services provided. This is exactly that situation, an existing agreement with a request for a 20% increase in fees. So here is what I'm requesting. This additional money would bring this share of franchise fees from 25% to 31.25%. With subscriptions, cable subscriptions dropping, this percentage will continue to rise to the mid 30s and 40s if we see a similar decrease in subscriptions in just a couple or few years. This is a declining revenue source for the city as well, which would normally go into our general fund. And so we must know the plan for future years. Right now, as this resolution is written, we do not know that plan. There is no information in the, in the packet that speaks to this, to allow this council to do due diligence and to treat this like any other service agreement or contract. The second is that it's, it was also floated to me the idea that, in a finance meeting, that this additional money is required in order to modify HTV's business model in light of the decline in cable TV subscriptions. We need to know what this proposed change is, and we need to know how we can measure the success of this increase in fees. Right now, we do not see any viewership numbers other than the number of subscribers, which is on the decline. So this is another area where there is no information in the packet that would allow us, the council, to do our due diligence and to treat this like any other service agreement or contract. So I'm asking my colleagues up here to think about my requests for more information, which I think are reasonable and have precedent, even in the last two or three meetings here on DAS. And I'm asking my colleagues to recognize that we do not have the information right now in front of us that we would normally have to treat this like any other service agreement or contract. And because of this request for information, upon which to make our informed decision up here, I move to table this resolution.
I'll second that. All right, there was a motion to table, because we can vote on the table. All in favor, so if you vote in favor, you are tabling it. If you, so you say aye. If you vote nay, that means you will not table the resolution, and the resolution would come, we need a second. It would become up for, up for, up for discussion, further discussion. So, all in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Who was aye?
No.
No.
I'm a nay.
The rest nay?
Yes.
Two ayes.
Two ayes and one aye.
All right. So, the, the motion to table does not pass. Do I have a second to bring this resolution to the floor?
He, he didn't make a motion.
Oh, he didn't.
To adopt the resolution, so you need a motion.
All right. So we need a motion to bring this to the floor.
Motion to bring this resolution to the floor.
I have a second.
Second.
Okay. All right. Comments from the public? All right, comments from council?
Sure. We're, we're not talking about J&amp;J consultants somewhere down the street, right? We're talking about Hometown TV. I still remember my own interview in 1995. And Hometown Television is a, I mean, it is, it is, it is Summit. This is not like some random organization. They're requesting an additional $16,809. I don't want to bother our CFO, but maybe you know if that's correct or not. I think so. Thank you. To reach a total of 84K in 2024. Now, this is not perpetual. This is just for this year, right? We're, this is not a 20-year contract. This is just for this fiscal year. Okay, great. In light of the factors of declining subscription services and the changing landscape in media, it's clear that HTV will need to adapt and innovate to remain relevant. And providing them with a year to strategize and reinvent themselves would not only be fair, but also a prudent approach. HTV's board is fully aware of the declining revenue from franchise fees and is actively working to diversify their funding sources. I've had the opportunity to hear some promising ideas as council liaison to HTV. They understand that the $84,000 rate would be a fixed funding level moving forward. Would it be, would not be a fixed funding level moving forward. With no additional increases from the city anticipated, again, this is Hometown Television. This is a staple in our city. They record our meetings. They record us right now. They've been doing this for decades. This is not just some fly-by-night operation. This is, this is Summit. And if we're sitting here debating on whether or not to give them $16,000 so that they can continue their operations for another year, I don't know. I, I'm glad that this wasn't tabled. I just want to thank the other council members who are in support of this. I think it's the right thing to do. I think it's the prudent approach. I think giving them the opportunity to find additional revenue sources is just, is just right. So, thank you, Council President.
Other comments from council? Councilman Smallwood?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just have a question. Are our council meetings required to be recorded?
No.
Not by law.
Not by law. Okay. However, we do this because obviously we have 22, almost 23,000 residents in our town that certainly can't fit into this room. This gives us the ability to reach a much larger audience for our council meetings. I believe they also record our zoning board, our planning board. Is there any other boards that I'm missing here?
I don't think so.
Which are extremely important to our residents as well. You know, and not to get ahead of ourselves, but I mean, I'm, I'm looking at our agenda, and, you know, we're asking $75,000 for this, $75,000 for this, in terms of engineering companies. And maybe we need them, maybe we don't. But, you know, this is a, a service that is allowing our residents to watch our meetings. There are several residents that, you know, more than several, that can't make our meetings. I think this is an invaluable service that we can provide to our, our residents. And, you know, this is a $16,000 increase from last year. It is a one-year contract. To be honest with you, I, I don't know how else we would be able to record these meetings if it weren't for Hometown TV. You know, they, they provide an invaluable service, and for $16,000, if this is something that, an increase of $16,000, you know, I, I think if this is something that were that important to, to really delve into, it should have been brought up much earlier than this meeting to find other alternatives, not just simply asking what the viewership is. You know, you can log into YouTube TV to figure out how many people have viewed our council meetings. By the time I get home, there's usually about, you know, four, you know, three to, three to 500 people have already viewed our meetings on YouTube. You know, unfortunately, yes, I do go home and watch our council meetings afterwards, sadly. But, yeah, I, I, I'm going to wholeheartedly approve this because I think, you know, if we wanted to, to do some research to find out what other opportunities are out there for recording our meetings, you know, this meeting zoning and, and planning board, then, you know, this is something that, you know, we should have done our homework ahead of time and requested that, that information sooner. So I will, I will be voting in favor of this.
Other comments? Councilman Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. So, folks might not realize, there's a real live person behind us over there who's responsible for, yeah, there you go. Hi, Jay, thank you. I want to start by saying I love Hometown TV. I love everybody that works there. And especially because he has the power to give me a bad camera angle right now. But this agreement that we have with them, 25% of the cable franchise fees, was established last time you were council president in 2015. Cable franchise fees have been on the decline every single year since 2017. Went up very briefly from 16 to 17 and down every single year since that. HTV has known it, council has known it. HTV is supposed to provide coverage for the things that are most important for the city, like council meetings, like debates, like the budget workshop. The budget workshop last week was $800. Would have been $800 for us to do that meeting, which then we decided wasn't worth doing, so the council, the public doesn't get to see it. The debate was also $800, which the political parties paid for. They're, they're essentially nickel and diming here. But it brings us back to the bigger issue, which is, people aren't watching cable. They're cutting the cord, right? And so this is an agreement where everybody knew what the agreement was. It's 25%, and the franchise fee is variable. Even before people started cutting the cord, nobody could tell us ratings for Hometown TV. Anybody can go look up the YouTube, see how many people are watching on YouTube, but you could just stream that on your phone. Somebody sitting here in the audience could do that. But the ratings from programs, we've never been able to see. So, nobody's stopping Hometown TV from going and trying to raise money. People can donate to Hometown TV. Nobody's stopping them from applying for grants. Essentially, though, what we're doing here is we're giving away $16,000, tax dollars, so that a totally unknown number of people can watch the most important topics to the community, which may not even include things that they want to see, like the budget workshop or like the debate, simply because it seems like they asked for it. So, did anybody, my question is, tell any of the other nonprofit organizations in town that we'd be handing out $16,000 to anybody that asked? And why is it that what Hometown TV is doing is more important than what the First Aid Squad is doing, or Grace, or Sage, or the Summit Education Foundation? And I'll close by saying, I think it sets a terrible precedent, that any organization can just come and ask for money at the end of the year, and without any criteria, one way or the other, we're just going to say, okay, sure. So, I'll leave it there.
Mr.?
Council President?
We close public comments, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Well, I'd like to, I'm not sure, Council President, I mean, you make the rolls and run the meeting, but I think it would be wise if Mr. Saruda wanted to come up and, and comment it's such an important issue that we might be able to make an exception. What I will say is, Rosie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've had 26 zoning board meetings, 26 planning board meetings, approximately 26 council meetings. Zoning board meetings, planning board meetings have at least two, three, sometimes four applications. Last night's zoning board meeting, tonight's Tuesday, was till 11 o'clock or so at night. There's a lot of really important conversations and discussions and applications on the table. The other thing I'll mention is, from what I understand, Rosie, we can't have a simultaneous council meeting and zoning meeting, correct? Upstairs zoning.
Not broadcast live.
Right. Not broadcast live. So there are some challenges and some things we, we need to, to change. I'm going to read a quick article from the Tap Into back in '21. Said the council chamber's AV equipment is 10 to 15 years old. Now, we've since, I mean, a lot of that, which generates more and more service calls each year. Cobbled together from various suppliers, it often requires multiple vendors to be involved in those service calls. City clerk said during the pandemic, people found it convenient to attend council meetings via Zoom. When the city went back in-person meetings, residents expressed interest in continuing virtual access. There will be an updated system that is compatible with HTV's equipment to continue cable TV broadcasts of the meetings. So I guess my point is, we've, we've known a lot of these technical challenges for a long time. And we've, Greg and Andy, I think we've always just disagreed on giving them a little bit more money as the cable franchise fees have come down. But I think the most important But I think the most important thing, when I speak to residents, it's the elderly resident who might not have internet access. There is an article, and I wish I could get the whole article, and I'll be brief, be super quick. 87-year-old Doris is cut out from the outside world, not because of her remote house, her death of her husband, or her failing health, but because she is unable to use the internet in a world that is increasingly digital. Routine essentials from paying bills to booking a vaccine require hours on the phone or are simply impossible without a computer or a mobile. Doris's isolation was sealed. She's missed calls from friends, hospital appointments, dentist appointments, and probably many other things we don't know about, says her neighbor. For most people, the loss of a phone number would be an inconvenience. For Doris, it is nothing short of a disaster because she relies entirely on her landline for contact with the outside world. Doris's story reflects the challenges facing millions across the country, as during the pandemic, more and more services moved exclusively online. Telecom's regulator, Ofcom, estimates that 6% of households do not have the internet, and 14% of adults only access it rarely. While most are aged over 64, 11% of poorer households are offline. And I'm not sure how accurate that article is, but I think everybody gets my point. And I can appreciate that you do not want to support this resolution because we've had these conversations for a very long time, but I would like to give HTTV the opportunity to fundraise. We believe in them, and I know there is many human beings that work behind there, and a lot of times, we do have technical challenges. So, we could certainly put a video camera there, but I think our city clerk would probably tell you that they are helping us a lot, and the technical challenges that we have on a daily basis, they're very helpful, and we find them very, very valuable. So, I'm pleased to support this.
I saw a couple of nods from the dais. If you do want to come up and give a comment, I think there's enough, people had raised issues on what you guys were thinking, so I think it's probably appropriate.
John Sarudo, 386 Hartshorn Drive, Short Hills. I am the president of Hometown Television, HTTV, and, you know, I certainly want to say there are many layers to what has happened with the cable cord cutting that has taken place. But, you know, it's interesting, we kind of reinvented ourselves a few years ago, and that's where we went to the HTTV name, because we're more than just television. We're basically a production facility. And, you know, it's interesting, though our fee has certainly dropped down from the city, our work certainly hasn't. It's picked up. And, you know, Councilman Vartan, I do want to let you know that we do not have a requirement to do the debate. We do not have a requirement to do, to host a forum, you know, for an issue in town. We choose to get involved because we were asked to do it, and we're a neutral party, and the city comes first. And we're more than the city. And as Councilwoman Hamlet just said, I think a large part of our market is the elderly, I'm going to say the senior citizen, because they don't have access to the computers, and sometimes they can't get out. You know, we do a lot for the city, as Councilman Smallwood just mentioned, but, you know, we also provide other information to the city. We cover merchants in town. We promote the downtown. We do the car shows. We handle the concerts in the park. Many, many, many different venues. We are much more than just providing information to the community from council and planning. We were honored, a few months ago, you see the type of work we do with interns, students. We've had many Summit students who are in college who do an internship, and they've moved on to, whether it be ESPN, CNBC, CNN, Fox. They've been promoted through the opportunity to learn how to work with production through this great organization. And again, that's something that I think Summit should be very proud of. We do a lot of fundraising. Not only do we have a fundraising drive going now that many citizens contribute to, but we've applied for grants. We've received grants from Central Presbyterian Church over the years, Summit Foundation, Union County, and we will continue to do that. And as Councilman Boyer certainly alluded to, right now, we are working with something on a very large scale that I really don't want to disclose, but hopefully that will materialize as we move forward, with national networks, to become a venue for them to possibly do a little production out of our studio, and we get a very, very nice supplement to our budget with that. So, are there any questions that anybody would have about Hometown TV that you'd like to ask me?
Please, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, thank you so much, John, for answering these questions. Can you tell me the percentage of funding for your organization that comes from the board? And it may not be off the top of your head, if you don't know, you can hear about it later.
Frank, I'm going to say about eight to 10%. About 10%. Yeah, 10% to 12% from the board.
What is the plan for retooling? And do you think that one year of funding is enough for actually retooling and redoing the model for HTTV? And I'm saying that because I am worried about, I'm worried that it won't be enough. That's my main concern, that it won't be enough to actually retool, because it seems like a heavy lift to do that.
Well, I think we're in the process of analyzing the retooling. I don't know how much retooling we really need to do, to be honest with you. You know, I mean, listen, and, you know, Greg, to your point here, it isn't that we just came to you at the end of the year looking for this funding. We've talked about this funding going back to the Finance Committee, you know, earlier, actually late last year. And, you know, we will find a way to make it, you know, but we certainly could use the support from the city, because as mentioned, you know, our workload hasn't cut down because the cord has cut down. In fact, it's probably picked up over the last three or four years. And I don't think $16,000 is going to break this town or this budget. You know, we have given, and we have some tremendous people in this community who are on our board. It's a great representation of the city of Summit. So, again, if there's any other questions, I'm here to answer them.
Council President, I just want to clarify, because I heard one year of funding. I just want to be clear that this isn't one year of funding, this is--
Our agreement is still a percentage of the cable fees. This is a one-off for this year to get the number to 87,000. That's what this is.
Eighty, I think eighty-four.
Right, eighty-four, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Next year, it would revert back to 25% of the cable fee that the city brings in.
Just want to be clear about that. We're not talking about funding for 2025. We're talking about a supplement of 16--
For 24.
Plus for 24.
Yes.
Okay.
Through you, Council President.
I also want to be clear, before I spoke up on Thursday, this resolution was for perpetual increase to 84,000. It had the word annually in it until I spoke up in Finance Committee and had it removed. This was going to be every year, and I think that is probably what we should anticipate in future years. We need to know the plan for future years as well.
Andy, Andy, excuse me.
Look, let's have a debate here from this--
I just mentioned, though--
Yeah, no, I get it, I understand.
Council President, we didn't request that.
Yeah, I understand. So, there was a--
Yeah, I mean--
And it was fixed.
That's good to know.
I mean, that's out of bounds. We're not even talking about that. That's not on the table.
Completely in bounds, excuse me. It's completely in bounds.
But that's not what we voted on, correct?
No. That's right. It's also good to know. Thank you for updating that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Councilwoman Hamlet.
I mean, I immediately agreed that that wasn't what was supposed to be in the resolution as well, and passed it to Council President.
So, real quick--
Yes, please, Councilman Vartan.
So, just to back up again, I don't think anybody has said they don't really value the work that Hometown TV does. Just want to reiterate that, of course, we do. I think the supporters of this resolution want to make it seem like this is an existential crisis for Hometown TV. But, you just confirmed that it isn't. You can find the $16,000 that you need if we didn't fund it now from the city, right? And I think that when it comes down to it, we just don't know what Hometown TV is going to do with the money. And I think that it's completely irresponsible of this council to say, go ahead, sure, whatever. We don't do that for anything, anything, ever. We don't have a memo, we don't have a budget, we don't have anything about this. So, that's where, I'll leave it. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments?
What we do, we submit an annual report to the city every year showing our expenses.
It's not in the packet. We don't have anything in the packet. I mean, we're talking about, we've known this is coming. Nine years we've known.
I think the Council President, if I can defend the Council President, he's had a pretty busy week, and he's had a lot to do with his family, so I think you should give him a little bit of a break here.
No, you don't, I don't need a break. Look, are there any kind of comments? I have a couple. Councilman will ask.
So, hi, Mom, Pops, my wonderful wife, who watches all these meetings back home, along with, as some of us have said already, a lot of folks who are not so tech savvy. HTTV, it's a Summit institution, and I'm in favor of helping them out so that they can get through this year. I would encourage all of our local businesses to advertise on HTTV. And I'd also encourage all of our residents who enjoy watching these council meetings to make a donation. I assume you accept those, right?
I like the second request better than the first, because we're not allowed to advertise. I wish we could, no.
Okay, all right.
That would end HTTV, Greg, if we advertised, so.
Yeah, and I mean, look, HTTV, they did interviews with us, they filmed their candidate statements, so they could be broadcast to the community, and I just, you know--
I just want to give a little anecdote. You know, during the pandemic, and I know I mentioned this when I was at the Finance Committee, we were contacted by a couple of the congregations in Summit and the surrounding area to put out their masses, their services, whatever, which we did. And we had so many people respond because it was a crisis situation, they had an opportunity to go to their service by watching on HTTV or Hometown Television, which otherwise wouldn't have been able to be a situation for them during that pandemic. And, you know, we've always been there during the crisis. During the hurricane, you know, the mayor came, and it was a conduit to, during Hurricane Sandy, to reach the public, to inform them about what's happening. And remember, it's not only just on the television, it's the ability to do the production. From there, you have your link, you have your social media, you have your other access points to communication. And I have to tell you, I think there are very few towns, cities, townships in the state of New Jersey that have a viable station like we do, at the numbers that we run at that. You want to go down to Woodbridge and see a budget of $350,000 to $400,000 coming from the community, you'll see a station. You want to go to Princeton, maybe Montclair, and that's about it. You know, I live in Melbourne. It's black. It's dark. People are very, very upset. And, you know, it's, something about having this is, you know, people talk about, the citizens talk about transparency. Everybody wants transparency. You can't get any more transparent than what you people do every single month, a couple times a month, on every level. So, that is my position. We greatly appreciate it. I will tell you, we will be around next year, we will be around the following year, with or without this $16,000. That I promise. But I will tell you this, it'd be an injustice if we didn't get it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to wrap up. Just, I have one quick question. John, you probably can answer this. The $84,000, you, I know this is the request, so it's an additional $16,000. Where'd that number come from?
Well, I mean, Frank, we were at $83,000 previously over the years, and with the cutting of the cord, it was reduced after $67,000, and we were running, and we were certainly hoping to hit the 83 to help us make it over the hump.
All right, that's what I thought. So, in past years, that's kind of been--
Where the number was. I think the high watermark one year was--
It was in the 90s.
Eighty-seven, maybe? Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I've kind of scratched my head around this and struggled a little bit about this because, you know, when we did do this, as Councilman Vartan, he's got a great memory, we'll miss that.
It's because he's young.
We did come up with this idea to link it to the cable fee, and it made sense, because that was at the time how the majority of people kind of accessed the programming. You know, even back then, YouTube wasn't what it was today. Things have changed dynamically, and people are getting rid of cable. But I do think that Councilwoman Hamlet made a very key distinction, because my 24-year-old kid doesn't have cable, but my 84-year-old dad does, and he's not getting rid of it. That's how he gets his information. Okay, so, I think while cable boxes are disappearing in our town for a, an important constituency in our community, take it or leave it, this is what we have. And I feel kind of responsible around that. I do understand that, I know we talked about this, now I'm dating myself, seven or eight years ago, and we all thought, oh, we could get a high school kid to come with a video camera and put it up here, and his hand would be shaking, but we could get that out on social media somehow. And, but it's, everyone's like, not an option, because the people we want to have access to, one, isn't going to look at it that way. And to John, your point, the production value, what the other things you can do with it just isn't there. Now, I thought long and hard about whether this is something that we should look at, like clearly, maybe there is a breakage in tying this to the cable fee. And it's clear that this number's going to continue to go down. I wouldn't want to be a shareholder in Comcast, but it's, but the service that gets provided isn't changing. And if, in a lot of ways, the quality of what they do has just gotten better. So, I think there's a disconnect there that we need to grapple with. I think this is a much longer conversation, that we should have this discussion in finance around our budget process in conjunction with HTTV, around what a number might be. I know that some people have said, why don't we bid this out like everything else? And I'm open to listening to any of these types of things. I think for what we get, for what they do, I'd be surprised if we could get a, like a contract with a provider that would do all the things that we do. But we don't know. We don't know. And so, maybe that is a thing that we should explore, and I'm sure that these guys would do well around that. But these are all discussions, I think, that we need to have and really drill down. Because I'm not, you know, I don't want to do this every year, right? This is kind of silly. We need to have a system in place where your revenue, you understand what your revenue stream is, we understand what we're paying, and we understand the services that we're getting in return for that.
And can I just say one thing too? You know, and Greg, I wish we could, you know, have some kind of rating system, see what, how many eyeballs are on us. The only way we can tell is if somebody says, hey, I saw that show or whatever, and it does happen. But, you know, one of the reasons why the quality has improved so much is because technology's advanced. And with that, we've had to keep up with it, so there's always acquisitions of different types of equipment that is very expensive. And, you know, we do all sorts of things to try to get that, and that's where a lot of the grant money comes from. But we also, you know, need the supplements, and that's where we're at. So, unless there's another question, I'm going to sit down.
Please. Now, I can't not, Council, or former Council President Marjorie Fox knows the rules, so I can't tell her she can't speak. So, you go, come on up.
Thank you, Council President, members of council. Marjorie Fox, 32 Rotary Drive. So, I'm just a little bit disturbed by seeing this process. I want to preface this by saying that I think that Hometown TV does a great job, and what I'm concerned about is that the six years I was on council, every year, we had this conversation about funding Hometown TV, and it's the same conversation now. I'm betting it also happened at the beginning of the year. I'm not privy to that, but I'm betting that Finance had this conversation sometime early in the year, and when the 24 budget was being discussed. And that, I think the fact that this is coming in the December meeting, the second meeting in December, is problematic at best. And there's nothing in the packet in terms of background information. For every year, we have the same request for an additional amount to bring it up to 84,000 has been asked for. And the, and my recollection is, we have said, no, we want to see a proposal for what you're going to do, how you're going to retool, and I'm not sure that's ever been presented. And then, the process has gotten worse because public comment period closed, and then you allowed, you know, Mr. Sarudo to come up here and speak, then you allowed him to have a back and forth, and to have a dialogue that doesn't happen with anyone else. I think this is a broken process. I think, you know, I think it's a process that should happen. There should be a discussion. There should be review, but I think this needs to go back to a committee and back to a discussion where background information is collected, where we have all the information about what Hometown TV has done, and it should be properly noticed and put on the agenda with all the background information for the public to see and to understand what's being offered. I think it's very cavalier to just say, oh, it's just $16,000. I, I think it's very cavalier to just say, oh, it's just $16,000. Because it's going to set a precedent. I think this should be put to, to bed once and for all. But this is not the meeting to do it. I would urge you to table it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. You know their comments? Let's have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Your motion carries. Alright, Finance, number three, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11671. And this resolution adds $35,000 to the 2024 legal services contract awarded to the law firm of Cleary, Giacobi, Alfieri, and Jacobs. This will increase the total contract to $285,000 for 2024 for additional legal services provided this year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Yes, it's Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Giacobi, could you please provide the services that you, lay out the services you provide for us? I'm kidding.
Other comments from council?
I'll just make one.
Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet.
I'm actually speaking with our soon-to-be business administrator, city administrator. And I, I did say, because I look at every single bill that comes through the city pretty much, as everyone knows. And I said, I said, you know, this one's, this one's a hefty one. And the one thing we discussed was, Matt, thank you for stepping up as we were in between city administrator. You really took on an extra role and we looked to you for guidance on a daily basis in the last 90 days until we got Mike back up here. So we know you've been filling a huge role for us, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other comments? Yes, Councilman Vartan.
I, I have appreciated working with you these many years, Matt. Thank you. I, I think it should just be said that professional service contracts shouldn't be, for any organization, the way that we deal with staff vacancies. I also will say that I think it's extremely important, especially when it comes to attorneys and our professionals, that there be a centralized process through the council president and through the office of the city administrator, so that you don't have nine people, eight people, all calling our professionals and racking up bills. It's important that every member of council knows that and that every member of council has access to the same information that everybody else has. Thank you.
Other comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance, number four, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11658. Per closed session, this resolution authorizes the payout of accrued time for a public works employee who's retiring in January. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Comments from the public? Any comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, moving along. We're going to Administrative Policies and Community Services, number one, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 11668. This resolution authorizes an amendment to the personnel policy specifically related to paid holidays for city staff. Summit seeks to be competitive with other municipalities in order to attract and retain top talent. A recent survey of nearby municipalities conducted by our excellent HR leader, Megan Champney, found Summit way behind other municipalities when it came to the number of paid holidays for city staff. This resolution seeks to remedy that situation by expanding the number of paid holidays from 13 to 15. The addition of two floating holidays, one designated by City Hall and one selected by the employee, will show city staff they are appreciated, and I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, Administrative Policies and Community Services, number two, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 11666. This resolution appoints a new chief communications officer for our closed session discussion. I move to adopt this resolution and welcome Jenny Hoff to City Hall. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Ms. Hoff, welcome. I, you know, I, I think this city is, I, I think this city is privileged to have you. You, you interviewed well, I mean, CNN, MSNBC, NBC affiliate, award-winning journalists. When we interviewed you, I know that you used to work in Texas at City Bee Cave and did a column called "The Beehive." I thought that was hilarious. I probably got that wrong, though. But I just think that you bring an, an energy and a, a strategic messaging, your public relation skills, digital media, which we need for our website, how, what you did in Texas to bring here. I think it's truly needed. You know, the residents want some improvements there in communications and how we do certain things. So I'm excited to have you. Welcome, welcome to our long meetings at night and everything else, so, welcome.
Other comments? Madam Mayor?
I just want to say, welcome. And Jenny has already hit the ground running. I feel like we're very fortunate to have her here. Moved here in August from Texas and found her way to City Hall very quickly. It was a chance meeting, but I'm very, very pleased that you applied and won the bid and I'm looking forward to working with you, so welcome.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Jenny, welcome, we're so excited to have you. Thank you for coming tonight. And if you have any questions, obviously let us know. I did want to take a moment to Megan Trindell, if she's watching, I did want to thank Megan. I think she deserves probably a round of applause because she was probably just, I mean, she was just a very competent second-in-command and she rose to being first-in-command. So I just wanted to say thank you to Megan and give her a round of applause, if that's okay.
Other comments?
Just want to point out that Jenny, you're a hilltopper now, so I just want to. Hilltopper resident.
Alright, no, I, I also want to echo all the comments. Jenny, welcome, it's great that you're here. Very excited to watch you, work your magic around our communication strategy. We have a lot to communicate. And I'm looking forward to seeing the ways we can reach people who don't, aren't always plugged in to what's going on in our town. You know, when I talk to people, they're like, what? What are you doing, huh? The vast majority of people don't come to council meetings. They, they do watch snippets on YouTube or HGTV. But a lot of the larger issues, we have to be very proactive in trying to reach the public. And I'm excited for you to be here to help us do that, so, welcome. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, welcome Jenny. Alright, Safety and Health, number one, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID Number 11635, amending the contract with Axwan Enterprises Police Department Body-Worn Cameras. On June 24th, 2024, the city approved ordinance 243320, adding two sworn officers to our police department. This expansion provided or required additional data storage and licenses for the body-worn cameras. About three months ago, the, the company notified the department, the police department, that the previous free community request feature offered during COVID now carries a cost. This feature enables officers to send civilians a secure link via text or email, allowing them to upload digital evidence directly to evidence.com while maintaining the chain of custody. The service cost will cost $16,599.96 for the remaining three years of the contract. I move this for, I move this resolution for approval.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Quick one.
Yes, please, Councilman Vartan.
Two, two quick things. I think what this company is doing here doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm, of course, going to support this resolution because we need this. But companies that host these kinds of services do not have to charge user fees. It, it's essentially going to be the same operating cost for them to have 47 officers for us or 49 officers for us. Right? So, but, okay, we need it. The second part of it is, that, that service that they offer, to be able to text a resident and they can upload the evidence, their Ring camera footage, whatever it is, securely to a website, is extremely important. And they're basically price gouging. They're basically saying, holding us hostage here, saying, you, you take away that service that then is not fair to the residents or to the police, or pay $16,000. And of course, we're going to pay it. But again, I, I don't think it's right, I'm going to support it, but I just needed to make that point. Thank you.
Other comments?
Council President, I, I, you know, I, I think Councilman Vartan makes a, makes a great point here. And in the future, we need to, we really need to look at this. I mean, they offered something during COVID-19. It's a, it seems like a data storage issue possibly, but, you know, is it cloud storage? Or, you know, I mean, it, it does seem really something that we need to look at and talk to the police department and see what else is out there. However, I agree with Councilman Vartan that these body-worn cameras are needed. So this is something that we, we definitely have to do. But, yeah, we should definitely look in this. I, I agree, Councilman Vartan.
Councilwoman Hamlet?
Okay, Councilman Vartan, now you have me interested because I, I, I have some questions as well, I think, now. So it sounds like we got involved in this contract in '22. And I guess my question is, why did we do a five-year contract? And can we get out of it now? If that, if you think that's what makes sense?
Well, I, I don't know.
And who are the, who are the other, like, did we go out to bid for this?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we need to get out of it. I think at the time, obviously, there was no charge for this service. And now they're saying there is a charge.
Well, no, it said over five, over, it said in, it said, "The financial obligation for the city over a five-year period, so from 2022 totaled $243,369, resulting in an annual payment of $48,694 to be paid from the police department's operating budget each November." To date, the Summit Police Department has made the first two payments, so '22 and '23, and the third payment for '24 is currently in the process of being made. So it sounds as though the only thing that has changed in this is the body cameras for the two additional officers. Correct?
And, and the, and the storage fees for uploading the evidence to evidence.com.
Got it.
I think is the main problem.
That's the bigger deal. That's the bigger deal. Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments? Yeah, I mean, storage does cost money. I don't know whether this, you know, they, we have a contract, we need to do this. It actually is the right thing to do in case there's any issues. You know, I support our officers with cameras and, but video is hard to store. It takes up a lot of space. And these things are always running. So it, it, there is, I would assume there are some costs. It is what it is. Yes, Councilman Wawski.
So, do we actually know if there's no additional cost for adding these two? I mean, I know Councilman Vartan just said there's essentially no additional cost and they're price gouging us, but.
No.
Yeah, there is a cost for licensing fees.
Data storage costs money.
Yeah, okay.
So we're talking about two different things.
Two separate things.
Two different things, right? First, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you have the licensing fees for the two additional officers, right? And then you have the storage fee that just kind of, right, came out. We're not doing this anymore. We, we did it during COVID as a, as a convenience, but now we're not doing it, you have to pay for this. So, and I think that is, that's the issue, right? This, you know.
Well, but, but is it, right? Like, are there other companies out there? Could we do better someplace else?
Yeah, I think that's something that.
Is it standard? Maybe it's a good deal. I don't even know.
We'll revisit, yeah.
So.
Alright, other comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, I know, Councilman Boyer, you had a motion you wanted to make.
Council President, I have a time-sensitive resolution to introduce from the floor concerning a fire department vacancy. We were, we were just notified of a firefighter's retirement. Filling this vacancy quickly is crucial to ensure public safety and maintain appropriate staffing levels in the department. I move to adopt the resolution declaring a vacancy in the fire department for one probationary firefighter as well due to the impending retirement and request to hire a volunteer firefighter as a probationary firefighter. So, just, just so, just to be clear, let me back up. So the first request is to fill a vacancy.
Alright, so let's, let's vote on that one first.
Okay.
Okay. So there's a motion from the floor to declare a vacancy for the fire department for one probationary firefighter. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Alright, are there comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so that motion carries. Now, Councilman Boyer, you had another motion you wanted to bring.
Thank you, Council President. So the second motion is, I want to, I want to adopt a resolution declaring or, yeah, requesting the hiring of a volunteer firefighter as a probationary firefighter.
Okay, so he's made a motion from the floor to appoint a probationary firefighter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, comments from council? Or, I'm sorry, comments from the public first? Comments from council?
Through you, Council President?
Yes, please.
Is this, I know that the first one did not have any possible paperwork. Is there anything to look at for the second one? Should we?
In, in terms of the, the firefighter we are hiring?
Right, you're, okay, so you're, you're moving someone from, someone from probationary? Sorry, volunteer to probationary?
Yes. Yep, and that, that, that volunteer firefighter has been interviewed and they were on the list. So they were kind of next up in line.
Great.
Passed all tests and.
Do you want to add anything to that, Chief?
Yes, we went through the process a few months ago. We just hired a fireman. This is a candidate that was first on the list. He's next up. He's already been through the process a couple weeks ago, so he's all ready to go, so he's set to go, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from council?
Again, sorry. So the probationary person went to fill the vacancy that you just talked about. Did, I'm just clarifying, did the probationary person go to fill the vacancy that was the first one?
It's further to throw that he will be moved from the voluntary division who become a probationary fireman to fill in the void of the fireman that's retiring.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you.
Other comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Okay, we're moving along to Capital Projects and Community Services. Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. I think I have about 13 of these, so bear with me. This is Resolution 11545. Whereas the city appoints an administrative agent responsible for administering Summit's affordable housing program. Duties include, but are not limited to affordability controls and the affirmative marketing plan, all of which are overseen by the city's appointed municipal housing liaison. And whereas the city's municipal housing liaison recommends the reappointment of Leckington Advisors as the city's administrative agent, I'd like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Do we have any comments from council?
Just a quick one. I want to say that we rely on Mark almost on a daily basis and he's probably one of the smartest individuals in the business, so we're really lucky to have him. And we're very excited to reappoint him, especially as we go into the fourth round and, and find the most appropriate affordable housing for, for everybody, so.
Great, thank you. Other comments? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, Capital Projects and Community Services, number two, Councilwoman Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 11670. This resolution supporting the amendment of the Fair Housing Act as proposed by the New Jersey Institute of Local Government Attorneys. I would like to move this resolution.
Second.
And.
Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Through you, Council President?
Yes, please, Councilman Miniger.
So the last time we had a resolution that was similar to this, kind of making a statement about a state, a recommendation to the state about affordable housing, we made some language choices that I think were wise within that resolution. So we were able to remove some language that was problematic. I suggested that we remove some laughably biased language in there and it was, it was, it was okayed by the people that were doing that. In the case of this resolution, there is a statement in here that is, quote, "Turning the garden state into the garden apartment state." I think that falls in. I think that falls into this category. We don't need puns to make our point with this, but more importantly, we have residents who live in apartments. I'm one of them. It includes, and we includes people who who live in garden apartments in Summit, people on Morris Avenue, New England Avenue, Springfield Avenue. This kind of language is completely unnecessary to get the point of this resolution across. The use of language has been a problem for Summit in the past as well when it comes to affordable housing. But I am going to vote for this because it, because I think despite the language that is unnecessary, there's a chance that this will help Summit by getting us a more attainable number of affordable housing units, which could result in the faster completion of actual physical housing units for people to live in, and it will be less likely to be ground to a halt by opposition or lawsuits, and instead could be more likely to result in people's lives being improved, so. That's it.
Councilwoman Hamlet.
Yes, Councilman Miniger, thank you for your comments, but I don't see that quote in the resolution. I know that was in Jeff's memo. What's that?
Third paragraph.
In the resolution? Third line. Oh, okay, perfect, thank you. Got it. Okay, well, I guess we can have Jeff Sorenian discuss that. I didn't see it in there, but.
Look, go point
Yeah, Mr. Sorenian, want to comment on that?
My name is Jeff Sorenian. I had a hand in drafting the foundation of this resolution. I think it's absolutely true that the legislation is causing overdevelopment, but if you were to strike that, it would still make the same point, which is to say that what the problem is with the existing legislation is a create, it causes overdevelopment. You know, you know, you already had overdevelopment pressures from prior laws. This puts it over development on steroids. It was a turn of a phrase that I thought made a point, wasn't intended to insult anyone. It was intended to make it tangible to, to people that don't live, breathe, and sleep this, but if you strike it, it still makes the same point.
Through you, Council President?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Can we, is there a way to propose that this be adopted as amended?
You can make a motion to amend the resolution. You can do it right now.
Okay, I would like to.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So we, your, your proposal, Councilman Miniger, is to just strike from thereby turning into, turning our garden state into the garden state apartment? And so the, the resolution read, it forces municipalities to overdevelop, comma, and it places the cost of the obligation on the shoulders of taxpayers, et cetera.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Since this is in my committee, I would just like to ask Jeff Sorenian to give a, just a brief overview, especially for the public, so that they can understand exactly what we're talking about. When we went to the New Jersey League of Municipalities, we listened to Mr. Sorenian and his partner, Ed Boozak, and it was definitely one of the rooms that you could not get into that day, because so many municipalities are interested in taking this resolution and sending it to the legislature so that our, so that our voices can be heard. And Jeff, you can give a brief update if you don't mind, Council President.
Council President, before we do
Let me ask Councilman Boyer to speak first, please.
Before we do that, we're talking about striking the sentence.
Yes, exactly.
So, um, the, striking the entire sentence?
No, no, just, just the, the thing that we'd be striking is thereby turning our garden state into the garden apartment state. So it would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 words.
Because there was some good stuff at the end.
Yeah, just those 10 words.
All right.
All in favor of striking those 10 words?
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
This is not going to prevent us from approving this resolution.
No, I mean, I would defer to our lawyer.
And, and then pass it as amended.
Perfect, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're striking those 10 words? Okay. Perfect. All right.
Now you need a motion to approve.
Right, now, Councilman Miniger, could you make a new motion to approve the amended resolution, please?
Yeah, I was
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, it's, uh, Councilwoman Hamlet, sorry.
I'd like to make a new motion. Do I have to say the whole thing again?
No.
Okay, thanks.
As amended.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this as amended.
Awesome. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, yeah, I'd also like to hear our council, just to give a brief overview of the, the resolution.
Okay. The Fair Housing Act was amended in March. The act generates extremely high obligations, much like the law that existed in 1985 before the Fair Housing Act was signed into law. And the, the act, one of the, one of the main reasons why the numbers were so big and so untethered from reality is because they didn't relate to the actual amount of development that was happening in our state. So the whole idea behind the legislation that, that the institute, what, the, the origin of the legislation is, the institute looked at the amended Fair Housing Act from March, and like municipalities throughout the state said, you know, this is really a problem. Affordable housing is a good thing, but it needs to be within reason, it needs to be much more temperate. And so they created a subcommittee to, you know, what can we do to address this legislation? I was on that committee. Ed Boozak, my partner, was on that committee, and we recommended, the committee recommended an amendment to the Fair Housing Act, that there would still be a, a lot of obligation, there'd still be a lot of affordable housing, but it would be tethered to reality, and it would hopefully facilitate more voluntary compliance, because municipalities would have more achievable goals. So the, the institute voted in favor of supporting the legislation and then sent it to all the municipalities in the state, and it also sent out a chart showing what the numbers would be if your obligation was based on, on the, on the new formula than, as compared to the existing formula. And, and that's where we got to where we are. And then they sent around a draft resolution, because a lot of municipalities wanted to express their support for it and to facilitate their ability that you could take the form, tailor it to your town, and express your support for the legislation.
Great, thank you. Council President? Yes, Councilman Vartan?
I'll give you my three thoughts here. Number one, I don't think it's clear why we're in such a rush to do this, and therefore I don't know whether there was enough time for this community that clearly has many affordable housing advocates, and this is an important topic. I don't think there's enough time for the community to truly understand and consider what we're doing here. Second, I think the actions taken by this council throughout the year have painted a gigantic bullseye on our back. If we pass this resolution, we don't yet know if there are any potential repercussions. But third, however, what the NJILGA is proposing is 59 units compared to 350 units, and that's better, so I am going to support the resolution. Thank you. Thank you.
Already had them. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'd like to ask just Mr. Giacobi, your involvement with the, I know you teach for Rutgers for this institute and our city planner. Our city planning attorney is also one of the well-respected attorneys on this board, but can you just give a little bit of background about this board and your involvement in it as well?
Well, I teach at Rutgers on a different, through Rutgers, on labor law.
But their course, right, their course. You teach through their course.
I, yeah, I teach with none of these members. I do labor law, but
Right, yep.
It's a, um, the Institute of Local Government Attorneys, and I, I speak at the League of Municipalities on this as well, is made up of attorneys in all facets that represent municipal government. It's, as I said, being a municipal attorney, in a lot of ways, it's being a jack of all trades, master of none, because there's so many different facets to municipal law. Mr. Sorenian is probably the foremost expert on affordable housing in the state, and this is something that every municipality is grappling with, and so they go to the reserves of all these attorneys that are dealing with this issue throughout the state in different, you know, rural municipalities, suburban municipalities, urban municipalities, and how to, how to grapple with it. And I think that what they've done is they've looked at the number of housing starts, COs that have been issued just for building in the state, and they're tying it to that because affordable housing, as you know, generally is a 20% set aside. So if every five homes built, one of them has to be affordable. And I think that that's what this is doing, and this, and what you're getting is you're getting literally the best affordable housing attorneys in the state who have worked on this and now bringing it to the legislature and hopefully getting some relief, so that the growth is sustainable. I mean, I have another town right now that has huge burdens, and that, one of their big problems is they don't have water capacity. They literally don't have any more water capacity, but they have to build. So then what do you do? You have to put in bigger sewer lines. That's a huge expense. So I think that this is something that, a lot of municipalities are going to be passing this, to, to have the legislature, you know, act on it so that we don't have, you know, for the last 10 years, from 2015 to now, towns have spent tens of millions of dollars litigating affordable housing. This will give us a little bit more clarity, and actually, I think, be a, a relief to taxpayers, not having to spend money litigating these issues as opposed to having a roadmap is very clear to follow up.
Thank you. Other comments from council?
I mean
Yes, Councilwoman.
The real quick comment I would say, Greg, is as far as educating the public on this, we've spent months talking about this, whether it's at the league or on Zoom meetings, and it's our job as elected officials to educate ourselves and make the right decision when things are short notice, and I think that this is going to do, this is certainly going to benefit the City of Summit, and it's certainly just a recommendation. We're not making any changes, but it's, you know, when you look at the methodology and, and Jeff, when you look at the entire piece of the pie, that, I think you said that the entire pie was just way off, and, and our slice of the pie is represented by a disproportionate number and share. So we could talk about this all day, but I, I fully support this resolution.
Yes, Council, Councilman Vartan?
I think largely we agree, right? It's, it's, there's 550
Yep.
municipalities in New Jersey. Nobody's, nobody's saying to us, you absolutely have to be the tip of the spear, one of the first 30 or 40, even 50 municipalities to do this. But again, we're in agreement that in principle, it probably is a better approach to the legislation, and I'm going to support it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just wrap up. Like, I, I fully support the legislation as well, because I think you used, Mr. Sorenian used a word, reality. Like, the, the, the legislation that got passed last March, it's la-la land. I mean, it just is. And you put a target on my back, whatever you want to say. It, it just is. I mean, think about this. They said we need to have 345 was our, our obligation. 345, right?
359.
Three, 359. Most buildings now is, is rental, so 15% is affordable. So divide that by 15%. That means developers would have to come to our town and build 2,393 units over the next 10 years to get 359, or whatever that number was. Just to put that in perspective, the building that was proposed for Broad Street West, that the council, the, a couple of councils ago fought and fought and fought for, finally the, the, the residents went crazy and it got pulled, that was 144-unit building. It was massive. The entire community came out, well, not all, so I'm exaggerating, but a huge portion of the community came out and gets it. So you divide that number by 144. Uh, let's see, I'll do that one more time, 359.
He's a history teacher.
Yep. I used to be a finance guy. Divided by 144. That is 16.6 of the Broad Street West monstrosity that was proposed to get the 359 affordable housing units. That's the number. That's how the math works. So tell me where you're going to put 16 of those things in Summit over the next 10 years? It's la-la land when they throw these numbers out. It just makes no sense. Summit has supported affordable housing for 50 years. We've been way out in front of the curve. Before it was even mandated, we were doing it in Summit. We should be proud of what we do. I'm all for affordable housing. I want more affordable housing in Summit, but I don't want 16.6 of those buildings built in Summit, because they can't build them. You know what they would, the next proposal would be, how about you build eight and you double the height of them? Maybe you can fit those in. Or maybe you build four and you quadruple the height. That's where this would go. This is insanity, what they've come up with here. And you just have to put it in perspective of what we just fought for two years ago to get taken off the table. We have to get sanity brought back into the process, and I think this legislation does a really good job of that. Because to, someone mentioned, if it doesn't, we are going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in our, in legal fees fighting this, because we can't do what they're asking us to do. And that money should go to promoting affordable housing instead of paying lawyers and consultants and planners and all these other people who, dirty secret, that's why this legislation got passed. There are a huge lobby in New Jersey. They make a killing off of stupid laws like this that municipalities have to fight. And we should stop. Let's return some sanity to the process. Let's get affordable housing that is manageable. And I commend Mr. Sorenian for bringing this to us, and I think this is great, and it should go to not just the legislature, but to the governor as well. Okay? So that's my comments.
Nope.
We had them already. Got to get
Not on this motion.
We did, we, they opened up with them.
On the amended motion, but not on this motion.
All right, come on up, make our meeting.
What constitutes
Name and
Oh, excuse me. Henry Bassman, 18 Hartley Road. What constitutes sensible affordable housing is subjective. What's objective is that housing is becoming a real emergency in this country. We've seen articles in the New York Times about boomerang children. We've seen that three, three-generation families are increasing. We've seen that people are having trouble meeting their rent. That's one of the things that Donald Trump got elected on. And we see that in this town, in just a few years, two-bedroom apartments went from $2,000 to $3,000. Now, we, as far as I know, have not met our Mount Laurel obligation, and that's been going on for many years. Right?
It's not an obligation. It's a goal, Mr. Bassman. We have a 50-unit goal, and we're well on our way to meeting that goal. So if you're going to use the language, use the correct language.
Well, as far as I know, we haven't had any new Mount Laurel affordable housing built in many years. You mentioned an eight units or 12 units is not going to satisfy the need. Now, I'm not arguing against this resolution, but what I'm saying is, if you want to talk about reasonableness, talk about the needs of the people in the community who can't afford reasonable housing, and then look at how we're going to house these people. Private equity is buying up homes and rest, and, and rental units and using algorithmic pricing to raise their prices as high as they possibly can, and this is a trend that is continuing. Homeownership is going down and rental costs are going up. We need to provide for people to have a place to live.
Thank you. Well, I would agree with that. We, no one's against affordable housing up here, so, and that's not what this resolution is about. It's about realistic goals that we can meet as a community that we've been committed to for decades, and that's not changing with promoting this resolution.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer.
Just a thought. You know, because we're talking about things we need to do. What we really need to do is we need rehabilitation in our current affordable housing here in Summit. Weaver Street, Glenwood, Vita Gala. Why can't we focus on that? Summit. Weaver Street, Glenwood, Vita Gala. Why can't we focus on that? No one talks about that. But we always focus on building new, building more. And then when you build new and more, the folks that are in Weaver, Glenwood, they're still there, looking out of their windows at the new apartments next door where other people are living in while they're still in these areas that need to be rehabilitated. So I just want to point that out because nobody talks about that.
Might I respond to that? You still have a rehab obligation. So whatever your plan's going to be in round four, you are going to be doing rehab. That's going to be a component of it. What this resolution is all about is new construction component, the round four component, and it's actually, it's just a piece of the round four component because you have obligations from one, two, three, and now they're rounding on round four. All this does is make that round four based in reality. You still have, you still have a rehab obligation, and you still have a lot of obligation from the prior rounds.
Completely understand. But that, the comment where we were going was not really about the letter that we're sending out. It was just about, when we're talking about the obligations to our current resident, our current housing stock, and what we should be doing. And by the way, I know you've been involved in this and these discussions, or trying to be, for a whole year, I've been trying to get the Summit Housing Authority in the city to talk about rehabilitation, right, for the residents. For some reason, unbeknownst to me, it doesn't happen. But that's a whole different conversation. And you know what? They're going to have a reorganization tomorrow, and I'm hoping that with the cooperation of new leadership at the helm, we can get the Summit Housing Authority into the city so that we can help them with different things like elevators, mold problems, windows, floors...
Couldn't agree with you more.
Councilman Palowski.
So, couldn't agree with you more, Henry. We need to provide more affordable housing for the people in our community. We provide a ton of affordable housing for the people in our community, but it doesn't count towards these state mandates. And I think maybe we should consider a resolution petitioning the state legislature to, to change the rules a little bit. We have 195 low-income housing units in this city, each of which, except for the fact that they're reserved for Summit citizens, right, people in our community, except for that fact, they would count as affordable housing. Overlook Hospital has housing, I don't know, dozens, hundreds of units that are, would be considered affordable except for the fact that they're reserved for, for, for people who work in our community. I talked to Mr. Serenian the other day, and I said, you know, we have $2 million in our affordable housing fund. Is that right? Something like that? And we're allowed to use that to help the, the folks at Glenwood and Vita Gala and Weaver Street, and they need it, right? They need it. When I, I remember when Jamelle and I were campaigning and we were talking about this problem, being criticized on social media, you don't know what you're talking about. There's already $2 million worth of grants or something like that. Where? Where is it? It never happened, right? And we can't just spend this $2 million because we need it for lawyers, because people want us to build high-rises here and completely change the complexion of this town. It's not right. And I think we need to seriously consider, talking to Fair Share, there aren't, there aren't any other towns like Summit in this regard, I don't think, or very few, okay, that have hundreds and hundreds of affordable units that don't count towards some, you know, number that somebody made up and threatened. And I think that we, what I suggested was, we should go to, go to Fair Share and say, listen, this is the situation here. Let's re, let's completely renovate all of these affordable units that we already have. You're going to count them, you're going to let them use them for us, and you let us, and you let us off the hook for round four. And it'll be, it'll be better, and it will help more people, okay? And it will waste less money on lawyers and everything else that we have to spend in circling and time at these meetings. It's enough already. I'm tired of it. That's it.
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
Henry, you made a point about home ownership versus rental, and I want to, I want to go to that because that's one of my sort of beefs about this legislation is it's not really encouraging home ownership. And I think that you're right because we need to help people build equity. So I think it's really important that that's something also that our legislators should really be considering when they're talking about our numbers and what we're supposed to be doing around affordable housing.
Good comment. Councilwoman Hamlet.
I said this at a Mount Laurel committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, but actually probably 14 days ago or 10 days ago, I had spent some time at our Summit Housing Authority, and as much as, you know, our new director's doing a great job, and she's just getting, you know, getting there and getting, getting organized, she's only been there a little while, she's doing a great job. But to go in as an elected official and continue to see the conditions that the residents are living in is infuriating. So when you talk to us about overdeveloping and, and the amount of proposals that we're getting from developers to overdevelop your community, you would be shocked. And so sometimes I, I get emotional around it because when I go into, I spent almost entire weekend in a few different houses, it, it's really upsetting to see the conditions in which our own residents are living in. And, you know, it's, Jamelle, what I would say at that reorganization meeting is they've got two options. They can take the Aspire money and do rehab, or they can, and remove the residency requirement, or we can rehab as much as we can for them, but something has to be done for those residents. I know this has nothing to do with this resolution, but something has to be done. We have to move in some sort of direction with those residents.
All right. About this resolution?
I think it has everything.
Okay.
Because we're hamstrung. And, and getting, if this resolution can help the legislation get through, we'll be less hamstrung, and we'll be able to help more people.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Capital Projects and Community Services, number three, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Council President, can I ask to move one up so that our, Mark Rosrosky can get out of here?
Yes.
Okay. And if my daughter's watching, you just can stop calling me because I can't answer right now. Just in case you're watching. Thank you, HTTV. But I could no longer answer my phone here, and I don't know how to turn off my Apple Watch, so it won't stop ringing. Okay. So this is Resolution 11659. Thanks, Jeff. This is Resolution 11659.
This is number four.
This is number four, yes. This resolution, five bids were received and opened on Tuesday, November 19th at 11:00 a.m. in the council chambers for the Summit Golf Course Foot Bridges project. The submitted lowest responsible bidder was CMS Construction of 521 North Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey, in the amount of $334,246. CMS Construction has completed various capital improvement projects for the city in a satisfactory manner, including the dam at the golf course and additional positive feedback from their references. I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Any comments from council?
Council President.
Yes, please, Councilwoman.
Thank you very much, Council President. So this is long awaited. I think the first time that Department of Community Programs actually had, asked for this or put this on the budget was in 2019. These are two bridges that I think would increasingly make our golf course or municipal, municipal course much safer, safer for the, the residents that play there. One bridge would prevent the current, currently, there is no bridge from the parking deck or parking lot to cross over the creek. So they have to walk out to River Road and then back down into the, the golf course itself. So this is going to give the opportunity for them to cross over from the, directly from the parking lot without having, without having to walk into the street. The second bridge is from the clubhouse to the first tee, which is a relatively steep walkway down. And it's, you know, I'm actually really surprised that no one has actually fallen and had any injuries so far. So, but, you know, this is a preventative measure to, to get this and to basically provide a lot more safety for our residents who use our municipal golf course, and I'll be fully supportive of this.
Thank you.
Although, I will say this. I wasn't necessarily happy about the price, but looking at the, the bids, yeah, they all, they all, all four of them can't be wrong. So at least we went with the least expensive. So I will support this.
Other comments from council? All in favor?
Wait, wait.
Oh, oh, Councilman Palowski.
I'm sorry, Mark. I'm, I'm in favor of the inner bridge, for sure. But the outer bridge, I'm just not so sure we need. And it does have a hefty price tag. And I understand it's a safety issue because we don't folks want, we don't want folks walking that close to River Road when there are speeding cars going by. But I think we did talk about this a while back, and there have been zero incidents there in the 60-plus years that the municipal golf course has been there. And I wonder if, if we pass this tonight, maybe we could simultaneously think about an alternative solution to that second bridge while working on the first one. I think one of the things that I had suggested way back when were, you know, you see, I, I work in Newark, and along the streets in Newark are these giant concrete that would stop a tank. You know, could we put some of those up? Could we add an entrance, you know, there and maybe move the tee to the other side of, of where the bridge is? Put some fencing up to be safer. I get it, you know, and I want it to be safe, but that's my reservation.
Other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We had public comments. I'm not going crazy, did I? I'm not reopening. That was a one-off. I'm sorry, Diego. We can't do this every night. It's, it's 10 o'clock. We had, you had an opportunity to comment when the resolution was introduced. Okay? We're, we're going to move on. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay. So now we're going back to Capital Projects and Community Services, number three.
Okay. Thank you, Council President. This is 11660, 11660, yes. This resolution, in accordance with the city treasurer's certification of availability of funds, a copy of which is here, is attached and made part of this resolution pursuant to the Bergen County Cooperative Contract Number 24-21, a purchase order in the amount of $73,400 be issued to rapid pump and meter service. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second. All right. Comments from the public? All right. Comments from council?
I just have one, Council President.
Yes, please.
Can you please just confirm, Tammy, Ms. Baldwin, on, in the memo section, it says it's coming from 2023 Sewer Capital. I think the account, the account numbers reflect properly. It's double, double zero A, 18. I think the memos, just that, I think it's just the, the language in the memo that's wrong, but the numbers seem to match. But if you could just confirm that tomorrow.
Other comments from council? Might just make one comment. We need pumps to move the stuff that goes through our sewer lines. You don't want your pumps not working. You will get some phone calls from the residents if that's the case. So I heartily support this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Councilwoman Hamlet, would you be adverse to bundling five, six, seven, and eight?
No.
Thank you.
How about nine and 10?
You want to throw those in there too?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep, that's fine.
And 11.
How about 11 as well?
I can't do, wait, yes, sorry, 11 and 10.
So we're going to bundle five through 11.
Okay. Okay, so...
Progressive insurance, sir?
Okay, so, Council President, this is, how much do you want me to say here? All of it?
Say various engineering and planning services.
All right, so I'll just say that. So, Council President, this is ID 11650, 11649, 11647, 11646, 11653, 11652, 11651, and 116, sorry, never mind, that's it. So this is for various professional services for the 2025 authorizations. I would like to move these resolutions.
Second. Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Yes, Councilman Palowski.
So, it's my understanding that this is, is a bundle of resolutions authorizing services from various different vendors. And I know that we are planning to put out RFPs for different things, and that some of these are necessary now in case we need certain services. We have to have already authorized the city to pay for them. But it's also my understanding that these are not to exceed, and so that if, for example, we think we can do better on one of these next week, we could ask for more proposals and wouldn't necessarily have to use all or any of them over the course of the next year. We just have the ability to do that. And so I'm going to support this, and I'm going to vote for it. But I would like to, to continue, you know, looking at alternatives and find ways to spend money. And we're not going to be on the hook for anything, and if we need something, we'll be able to get it. And so I think we need to do that to keep the city, city moving. But that's my comment.
Mr. Schrager, you want to confirm that?
Through you, Council President. Yes, Councilmember Palowski is correct. This is just providing us with a tool to utilize professional services throughout the year. It does not guarantee we'll, we'll use all of it or any of it. You know, I could just, for example, we had a contract last year with a firm for $100,000. We lose, we used almost none of it. So we also at any time could go solicit proposals following QPA and purchasing guidelines to get someone who's not on this list. But this just has, provides us with the ability to use people on the ready or professional services so we don't have to go through the soliciting quotes and even bringing each item to council to expedite some of the projects.
Thank you.
The last is my favorite part.
Other comments from council? Yes, Councilwoman Hamlet?
I completely agree with, with Councilman Palowski. I think as we have a new business administrator, we did not have a lot of time as a council to look at these RFPs. In fact, we should all be looking at all of these RFPs. It takes a long time. I spent today, most of my day in the mayor's office with binders spread out all over the place. And it's certainly not that I don't respect the opinion of our, of our staff, but it's important to get recommendations from consultants that is aligned with what our project goals are. So I look forward to Tammy and Director Schrager just taking another look at this so that we're all on the same page. You know, I'm not sure if we need to give Remington Vernix $250,000. Let's take another look, and let's see where we can cut costs in our operating, and just take another whack at this. I think there's a few we don't need to, but there's a couple in here where I just, I'm doing it only because we have to do it for, to get some projects done initially. But I really would say, once you get through budget season, we take a realist, 30,000-foot view of what we're using. And as Director Schrager is reorganizing his department, that'll be, become apparent, I think.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'll hold back. But I, you know, I want to...
No, please don't. Let it all out.
I want to clarify a couple of things, right? A, we're not giving Remington $250,000. B, the RFPs to look at, we're not giving any money. So what RFPs are, you know, they're, they're limited RFPs to look at, right? So like, I mean, when, when we get there, right, in assigning these tasks, so, for example, the Salt Brook, right, last year, right? That, that would come out of this bucket of money, right? Hey, Aaron, you need to look at the Salt Brook because there's a home that's falling into the Salt Brook. Can we get some engineers out of there, right? This, these professional services would then be provided for that, correct?
Yes, through you, Council President. So this is the pool of candidates we have to, to rapidly go out. So if one of them came back with a price that was, you know, over $6,600 or, or certain thresholds, now they can't just go out because we may have to get two additional quotes, we may have to get three quotes, we may have to actually bid it depending on what the dollar value is. With these in place, we have someone on speed dial we could just send out. Now, we also look at each price they give us. So just because they're on call, they could say it's, you know, $250,000 just to show up at a meeting. We, we wouldn't do that. Then the engineering division would say, no, absolutely not. Then we'd get a quote or go to one of the other ones on the list. But yes.
Thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to make that point that this is not like a blanket.
All right. Other comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right. We're down to caps, number 12, Councilwoman Hamlet. All right, we're down to caps number twelve, Councilwoman Hamlet.
Sorry, it's Staff Assistant Two. Sorry, just a second. Okay, sorry. Yes, thank you, Council President, this is ID 11664, which will, as discussed in closed session, declare a vacancy Department of Community Services, Staff Assistant Two. I'd like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Just for further information, this was for our wonderful employee, Augusto, who was the Staff Assistant Two, and now he is the interim Assistant DCS Director, is that right? Did I get that right? It's a mouthful?
Correct, yes.
So that is what this is for.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last one, caps number thirteen, Councilwoman Hamlet.
ID 11642, this declares a vacancy Department of Community Services, Division of Public Works, sanitation unit, part-time sanitation collector. I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to our consent agenda. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I just wanted to make a note, Tammy, which one were we looking at before?
Overpayment of taxes.
The overpayment of taxes, I, I just spoke with Councilwoman Miniger, we just need to check on those numbers for that one. I think they're right, but Andy and I were just sort of discussing it. The numbers just, I need to understand the numbers, and I'm not understanding the numbers.
Number 11656.
Yep, but I don't think it's anything that we're gonna accomplish tonight. So I think we can pass it as long as it's correct, as, I think the numbers are correct, right, Tammy?
Through you, Council President, I rely on our tax collector who has, I don't know, fourteen years' experience in doing the job and is also a CPA. I believe that the overpayment is on 2024, and what somebody may have been looking at was the 2025 amount, and that was per state court assessment. There was a change in the assessment, so it changed the amount of taxes due.
I'm, I'm good with passing the consent agenda, we just have, I just want to just double-check that tomorrow, and if it's, I think it's fine.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer?
I'm so sorry, I want to say something to Aaron during council comments, so I just wanted him to hang out just for a couple more minutes, hopefully we can get this consent agenda passed. If Councilwoman Hamlet doesn't have any-
I know, it's fine.
-any more questions, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. All right, all right, Councilwoman Boyer, are you saying you'd like to make a comment now, in front of public comments?
When, no, uh, public comments, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, public, you go first, right? I know, Aaron, you, you want to get out of here, right? I just wanted to make a quick comment and just say, during, during this week, Councilwoman Hamlet had an idea about putting Christmas trees up on Weaver and Glenwood, and the mayor was supportive of that, and I thought that was excellent to bring in the Christmas cheer. I called you, and you said, what do I need to do, right? And you made it happen, I was down there the other day in both locations, took some photos of the, of the, the Christmas trees and everything, and I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank you for ma, for making that happen. And you even said to me that maybe we can have a tradition of the kids putting ornaments on it every year, and then collecting them and stuff. And I just thought that was a, I thought it was a great, a great idea, a great thing to do, so I just wanted to thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. All right, you guys want to take off? Take off. Thank you. All right, thanks for staying so late. Okay, we're at our public comment section of the meeting. If there's any person from the public who'd like to comment on something that was not on the agenda tonight, now is your opportunity.
No public comments?
To bore everybody out?
Good evening, Marjorie Fox, 32 Rotary Drive. I just wanted to say a brief thank you to Councilmember Vartan, former Council President Vartan, and Councilmember Miniger. I had the privilege of serving with both of these gentlemen, and these are true hiltoppers, these are people who have real heart, and they care about the community, and I just, you know, I think someone is really, really fortunate to have had both of them on council, and they will be missed. Both of them have, you know, do their homework, they know what's going on, they both are experts at the budget, which has been really, really helpful. The other thing, though, is that they are people who care about Summit residents. Greg was a champion for, for the paid internship program, because he recognizes that a lot of students can't afford to take a free summer internship, they need to be paid in order to, to get that work experience, and that's opened up our internship program to people who maybe don't have the, you know, the ability to take that unpaid job. So I think that's been something really important. Andy took on the, the ADA compliant playground with the music and the, it's, this is the first fully compliant playground, and Andy was a champion for that, and brought in families with special needs children and special needs educators to, you know, to, to weigh in and to advocate for this, and I, you know, and we are very, very thankful to him for doing that. So I just wanted to say thank you to both these gentlemen, and best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
I am Barbara Von Klempfer from 156 Colonial Road, and I would just like to underline Marjorie's comments about Councilwoman Vartan and Councilwoman Miniger. In particular, my family was represented by Andy Miniger in Ward One, and I, I feel that this is our one chance to thank you for your commitment to your role on council and to Summit. You've worked hard, respectfully, with honesty and patience, and advanced skills for the tasks on the committees, all the way from parking to community services, and especially finance. I've been proud during these years to be, be represented by your talent, coming right from our own immediate neighborhood, but if you lived in another part of Ward One or in Ward Two, I would be equally proud. Because you're generous with your time and attention, Councilwoman Miniger, some other group, or population, or cause will find you, and they will also be very lucky and grateful. For now, thank you again, and may you and Sarah enjoy a bright and breezy, happy holiday very soon. Thank you.
Other comments from the public? Very nice, all right, we'll close our public comment section of the meeting today. Council comments? Councilman Palowski?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Greg and Andy both for their service to Summit. It may seem to the regulars in the gallery here, and the gigantic number of people watching at home on HTV, that we don't agree on anything, but in reality, we do agree on most things. And, you know, every disagreement that we've had forces us to think through our ideas, make them better, all to the benefit of the town, and I think we've done that over the course of this year, so. And we really came together down the stretch of 2024 to hire the best CFO in the state to also be RBA. But, you know, even though it may not have always seemed so, I really did enjoy working with you guys, and I thank you again for your service.
Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I just wanted to say a thank you to Greg and Andy, as, I guess I've been on council the longest with, with the three of us, it started with the, you know, and Marjorie was, was on as well. But I just want to say thank you so much. Greg, you're definitely always, you, you're literally the funniest person, no matter, no matter if we're in an argument, or, Fagan may, the mayor may have taken a second at that, but I think you have a, you have a funny way, or a great way of making moments a little bit lighter even when we do disagree, and I can appreciate that because I don't have a funny bone in my body, so. Thank you for, see, there you go. I know you and, you and the mayor are vying for the, the funniest up here, but thank you for all your work on the ambulance squad, that is certainly something that, that we're all proud of for you, not only, it's a lot of work up here, it's, it's literally a full-time job, and Greg has a full-time job. I think we're at the Capitol Budget Meeting, and I said something to him afterwards, and the next day, he said, well, I had to drive to Boston, I said, oh my gosh, you had to drive to Boston after that. So, you know, he, he's certainly dedicated, and he takes very detailed notes and prepares very well, so I, I've certainly learned a lot about taking notes, I know Rosemary's shaking her head because she knows how organized he was. But to Councilman Palowski's point, we, we agree a lot more than we, we disagree. Andy, thank you so much for all your hard work. I don't think we had any disagreements on, on parking and recreation while we were up on the dais, because we tip, we really got along very well in committee, and then Bob goes and votes against our bridges tonight. I remember a recent experience that I had with Andy, it was literally last week or two weeks ago, and I said, Andy, I don't think we should be paying for Zoom anymore, I think we should move everybody to Teams. And you could see the staff getting really nervous, and, you know, we're gonna take Zoom away, and then Andy followed up without me even asking, and he created a, a very detailed plan of how we can move away from Zoom and, and onto Teams, and he showed our CFO how to do everything, and then apparently I asked him to be on the Technology Committee, but we didn't have a spot, so. You know, but thank you for your, for your passion and, and all your hard work, I've really enjoyed working with you. He could have a spot, but thank you for all your hard work. Genuinely enjoyed working with you both, and, and thank you for all you've done for Summit.
Other comments?
Yeah, so, quick story, Andy, several months ago, and I'm not ashamed to say this, so several months ago, when we first got up here, Andy saw me struggling, right? Because I was like, I want to, I want to adopt-
An ordinance?
Or a resolution. So Andy comes up to me about a week later, finally, he says, listen, somebody gave me this, you know, when I first started, and I think he gave the same thing to Dylan, he says, this is the format of asking for, asking to adopt a resolution, and moving forward in ordinance, and making a motion and everything. And, I mean, that, that was, that's just the kind of guy he is, that was priceless. And you know what, I will, I will never forget that, because I still use it today. So, thank you, and, you know, you, you are, you are a class act. Mr. Vartan here, Mr. Vartan is a very, very intelligent human being, and I respect him a lot. You know, listen, between Facebooks and parties, you're Republican, whatever, all of that other stuff, you know? You, you, and, and especially like in my, in my line of business or whatever, you, you tend to respect the craft of people, you know? And I sit next to him, you know, we talk in emails or whatever, and I, I respect this guy. I respect what he does, he's been doing it for a while. He's very good at what he does, I listen to him, I'm like, some, after some meetings, I go home and I'm like, man, he got that off, that was pretty, that was pretty good. You know, just the way you move, man, I, you know, I, I, I respect you, and I want to thank both of you for your service. This is, this is, as, for a volunteer job, this is a tough job. This is not easy, you know, representing this small town of 21,000 residents, so, thank both of you, I, I really, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Smallwood?
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to start off with this. If you recognize this, the number on the bottom is not my cellphone, so if you would like to get this termination, if you'd like to have this stop being delivered to your home, the number is 1-800-376-6222. You know, I, I know a lot of times people will find these in their bushes, and for some reason, it always comes out on Wednesdays when it rains, and it's wet, and it's really, it's, it's not even newsletter, it's just really just coupons. However, I've, I've gotten several complaints about this being delivered to their home, and they would like for it to stop. So I would like to ask, if, if you would like this to be, to stop being delivered to your home, please call the number, as I mentioned, 800-376-6222. And then, please email the city clerk, is that correct, Rosie? Email the city clerk and let her know that you have called to terminate your delivery. And that way, there's a record from the city clerk's office, and, won't be my phone number anymore. So, with that being said, Greg, is this, is this right? My three thoughts. First, Tammy, congratulations on becoming our new BA, it's well-deserved. Andy, it's been a pleasure working with you on the Department of Community Programs and, and parking, I thought we worked really well together, we had, had some great times during our committee meetings, and it was, you really made it enjoyable. And as, you know, Councilwoman Hamlet mentioned, this is a full-time job, so I know that you are, you do have a full-time job as well, and it, it does, it takes a, a lot of work and a lot of preparation, and I really enjoyed our, our committee meetings, so I wish you all the best. Third, but not last, Greg, thank you for your service, I, I, I really do, you know, we don't agree on a lot of things, but I do enjoy having a beer with you, where we do agree on a lot of things. And, you know, I, I will certainly try to do it justice and continue your legacy with my three thoughts.
Thank you. Madam Mary, you want to go?
I would like to save my thoughts for the reorg meeting, because I do know that we will honor you then, and I would like to do justice to both of your service, so I will hold my thoughts.
Thank you.
And it's to, at 10:30.
Council President, just one thing, I wanted to say that to both of these gentlemen, however, I do have a couple of things to, to say, though.
Please say.
I wanted to say my last thoughts about the job that the police department has, has done this year on crime. Total property crime down 12.6%, burglaries decreased 56%, motor vehicle deaths 21, vehicle entry attempts dropped 67.1%. The number of ordinance, excuse me, the number of summonses issued surged 60.3%. Alcohol, open containers, the, the level, the level of commitment this year in terms of enforcing the law, and not to mention the resident protection ordinance, which there was eight summonses issued. I know our municipal judge and said that this was a, this was a great thing, you know, prosecutors are using it as a, as a bargaining tool, bringing folks back down to municipal so that they can be dealt with in our courts, which was the point of it. This number, the vehicle entry attempts, that's 67.1%, that is a huge, huge number. What an amazing job the Summit Police Department has done, but also, I want to thank our mayor and the initiatives that she has been driving, because this quality of life, this quality of life stuff, this 60% increase in the, in the number of summonses for urinating in public and drinking in public, all of this stuff, when you're walking your kids to, you know, get a slice of pizza, you know, when you're, when you're playing ball in the park, you know, and, and these, and people are drinking beers in the park and, you know, having a good old time, not tolerated anymore. It's not, you know, this is a different, this is a different environment, and we are gonna keep pushing this with policy, with support of our police department, we're getting back to where we need to be. Of course, nothing is perfect, you know, there, crime will always exist, but it is top priority here. The next thing I will say is, over, over the weekend, I did post something about the drones. The reason being is, I, you know, I sat on this for like two weeks, I was hoping it would shake out, you know, I'm like, this drone thing is probably an anomaly, it ain't going anywhere, I mean, it's, it'll probably go somewhere, but then, you know, the thirty, forty calls that I've gotten from residents made it an issue, because when residents are scared, when they're nervous about things- made it an issue. Because when residents are scared, when they're nervous about things, their issues are my issues. And then I started thinking about the hospital and the helipad. We had one incident in Branchburg, New Jersey, where a medevac helicopter was not able to land and pick someone up that was critically injured in a traffic accident because of drones. So that was a problem. Made me think about Overlook Hospital and what we're doing there. So I went to police chief, because I sent out a couple of letters. And one was to Stephanie Schwartz at Overlook Hospital to see what we're doing to monitor, detect what's going on with our medevac helicopters. Is there, is there anything that we have to be concerned about with these drones? Hey, listen, a 1% chance of a helicopter not being able to land because of a drone or drone hitting a helicopter, that's enough for me. It only has to happen once. Catastrophic, right? So I'd like our fire chief to actually talk about drones, the helicopter landing at Overlook. If you could just take two minutes to just talk about that, Chief?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Yeah, let's just tell you our experience. I think it's about nine or 10 years old, the helipad. Fire department's very instrumental in designing as far as with public safety involved. We had put a lot of precautionary systems in place, get the weather crash. And there's also a lot of procedures in place that Overlook Hospital has. So just for instance, if it is an inbound helicopter coming in, before the drones became an issue, the normal procedure that they would send up a staff member that's trained, go to the helipad and make sure there are no obstacles, make sure that the flight plastic is clear before the helicopter lands. That'll give the clearance to land. With the drone activity, they just reissued their awareness subject that, you know, beware of drones. So, but it's always been very safe to go up there with any obstacle. But with the drones being around now, there's extra precautions that the hospital's taking to make sure that that is clear. If in fact there is an issue with a drone or any of the obstacles, they quickly divert to another hospital that can take in a medevac helicopter. So, they've always done a great job with it. Like I said, with the drones, another layer of awareness that they're issuing for the team, save the team at the hospital. So, we're very confident that, you know, anything comes, goes up over there, they have a good, good group of people in place at the hospital that can very, very easily, you know, take everybody that come around.
Thank you, Chief. I think that's great information for the public to know that we have somebody that goes up there, looks to see if the skies are clear from any interference. And, you know, if there is, they're diverted to another location. You know, I think that's, that was one of my main concerns. Lastly, got to say, for, you know, our federal government, our FBI, Homeland Security, to claim that, you know, these drones are not nefarious while admitting that they have no idea of who, what, when, why, and how is utterly ridiculous. You just can't expect the American people to accept this extreme contradiction. And I just want to thank our mayor for being on that White House call. And I'm sure they said the same thing they normally say, which is, it's okay, but we don't know what they are. So, I think that's absolutely absurd. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
All right, I will wrap up. When I would just-
Andy, you want to?
Oh, do you? I'm sorry, may I?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you want to? You first?
Let me go first.
Yeah.
But I will say, I just do agree with Councilman Boyer's assessment around this drone thing. What is, what is sad is, seems like people in authority don't trust the people they govern with information. You know, we talk a lot up here about transparency, trying to provide the reasons we're doing things, what's happening in the city, because it's important. Because we respect the people in Summit. They're intelligent, they're smart, they deserve the information, so they can have an opinion about it. We see all too often, the higher up in government you go, the less and less and less they seem to respect our intelligence to be able to deal with things. I don't know what is going on with drones. I have no idea. But this has been going on for four weeks and no one can tell you anything about them. But they always say, don't worry, it's fine. It just is incongruous. So, I do agree with Councilman Boyer. I wish they would do better. We deserve better. And then I just want to wrap up my, what was I saying? To thank first, Councilman Miniger. I'm going to admit, I did not know you that well, Andy, when I showed up here in September. I think we had spoken maybe two or three times. That was it. So I really had nothing, no idea what to expect. And I plopped in on Finance Committee. And I was blown away with your seriousness, your attitude, your willing to engage with people around numbers. And I so respect the, your work ethic and what you brought to the table every day. You care. It just comes through. And, and you're here for the right reasons. You, you can tell you love the community, you want to give back. And I really, really enjoyed our, was it four months that we've been working together? So, you know, I feel like I've made a friend. And I'm so looking forward to seeing you when you're off council. I'll be off council soon, too. So, we can get together. And, and again, I just want to say thank you for your service. And it was great to work with you. And Mr. Vartan, I've known you for a little longer. So, Greg joined council when I think I was in my fifth year, maybe sixth year on council. And he was the Energizer Bunny. He was the newbie who was going to change everything. And he kept that energy going. It wasn't just like, you know, we're going to change the world and then you kind of hit reality. You know, he was a hilltopper from the day he was born. He brought that, that love of the city to Summit, to the council. And he was young, a lot younger than me. But I could tell, like, again, he was doing it for the right reasons. And it was so refreshing to see a different perspective than people, you know, in the, with older kids or what have you. He had a different perspective on what it was like to live in Summit and what Summit could be. And he showed it every day. And I really, really respected that. And I loved working with him. We agreed on 99% of everything. We disagreed on a couple of things, and that's fine. Human beings disagree. But we would have Scotches together, and I always enjoyed that. So, I'm going to miss you.
Me, too.
I really am. And I look forward to seeing what you do next. I know you'll be around. So, you know, you always can call me anytime you want. And I, and good luck with your next stage of your life.
Thank you.
And that's my comments. So, other comments?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you very much to the residents of Summit. And I've always wanted to do this. I think the timing's correct, to look right at that camera. It has been an honor to serve in this role and to be your representative on Common Council. I thank you for putting your faith in me to represent you to the, to the best of my ability. And it was a pleasure to meet so many of you over the course of these three years. To my council colleagues and mayor, and those former council members and mayor who were up here in the last couple of years as well, it was a pleasure serving alongside you. You all have your unique strengths and energies and beliefs and priorities. And I am a better person and a better citizen for having been a part of this diverse group of leaders. And the city is better for it as well. Now, at the end of the, my time on council, I do look forward to spending more time with my friends, family, my wife, Sarah, who has been endlessly supportive of my time up here and understanding of all that comes with it. But I want to quickly talk generally about some leaders I've met in my role as a member of Common Council that have inspired me and so many others. I can't name all of them, all these great people. But without the opportunity to serve on this council, I would never have been able to interact with so many pillars of this community. People who act on a daily basis out of selflessness and service, who are either driven or compelled, or maybe called to make others' lives better. Those are the leaders who have completely changed my perception of what a member of a community can be. This path, the path the city takes into the future will be determined by those who lead and by those who participate, make their voices heard in some capacity, and make positive change happen. If you are driven, compelled, called to action like those amazing leaders all around us, or if you're just bored, I encourage you to engage in this community's important issues. It's problems that are there for all of us to solve together, and it's celebrations as well. Participate in your local government either as an elected official or as a volunteer on a city board or committee, or simply act as a, or simply as an informed resident, or give your energy to an organization in Summit, or start your own because of an unmet need and make other people's lives better. Thank you, Summit.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to make a council comment?
I'll make a, I'll make it-
Councilman Vartan.
I'll get us home by 11:30. How's that? Thank you, Council President. This is my final business meeting after six years in office. I'd like to share some thoughts about my experience, this amazing city, and where we go from here. I was born in Summit. And for the first 10 years of my life, our family lived in an apartment on the first floor at 19 Ashford Ave. My grandparents lived right next door. My mother and father worked hard to be able to stay in Summit. They wanted my sister Jenna and me to go to the schools to learn and to grow in this great community. Growing up in Summit, we learned from family, teachers, coaches, pastors, and other role models to believe if we had the opportunity to help others, then we have an obligation to do so. I was raised to believe that if I worked hard, was honest, and treated everyone with respect, that I could be successful. The education we received in Summit was invaluable. I was the first in my family to graduate from college, where I met the love of my life, Megan. My sister Jenna graduated the next year and is now a teacher in Springfield. I landed a good job in sales. Megan and I moved back to an apartment in Summit. All the while, I served 12 years as a volunteer on the First Aid Squad. When I first ran for council, I lost by nine votes. I wished our new council members luck and offered to help in any way I could. After a short while, I was encouraged to try and run again. So I was honored to then be elected and reelected to represent these people and this place I love so much. And though we don't keep records on age, it appears that I was the youngest council president in Summit history. In his 1910 speech, "Citizenship in a Republic," Theodore Roosevelt said, "The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows the great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself in a worthy cause, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." These words have guided me throughout my time on council. I'm proud of what we've accomplished, sometimes through success, sometimes through failure, but always while striving valiantly. Service on council has provided me with an infinite variety of teachable moments, and I learned from them all. I'm proud of supporting our police and firefighters, of investing in the tools, technology, and training that our police need to keep us safe and to finally build the new headquarters our brave firefighters deserve. I'm proud of the actions we took during the pandemic to save lives, keep businesses afloat, and ensure our community could thrive. Initiatives like outdoor dining on Maple Street, sidewalk sales, and a vaccine clinic that administered over 50,000 doses exemplified Summit's resilience and innovation during that most serious crisis. I'm proud of the work on making us fiscally responsible and trying to keep taxes in check. From securing millions in grants for infrastructure projects to maintaining our AAA bond rating, to cutting costs like removing the gates in the DeForest parking lots that saved $750,000. I'm proud of all the many ways that we celebrated the proven richness of diversity, worked to improve upon the quality of life, and created opportunities for our young people by finally paying our interns at City Hall. None of these things could have been done without our outstanding city staff. Those here and those who are no longer here, but whose good work leaves a proud legacy. Community volunteers, all those who are elected to lead, and every member of the community who engaged passionately and respectfully in the process of government. And I could not have been part of it without the support of my wife, my family, and my friends. Thank you, everyone. These accomplishments were vital. Because the truth is, there are so many people in Summit, just like my grandparents, who want to retire here to stay close to their family. There are so many people just like my parents, working hard to provide for their children. There are so many people just like Megan and me, who want to start their lives together and maybe begin a family here. There are so many people who, if given the chance, would contribute and make this flourishing and welcoming city even more so. So that brings me to where we go from here. We need to decide whether to make the promise of Summit more exclusive, like a country club, or more achievable and accessible for all of us. I want to make the promise of Summit more achievable. So I think there are three things we need to do. First, we as a community must demand a list of clear priorities from our government. Our leaders must ensure these priorities reflect not only the needs of those with money or access to people with power. Our leaders must recognize the need to clearly outline values and balance varying points of view. Second, the community must demand greater fiscal responsibility. The economic reality for so many people in this community is that $100 tax increase is extremely impactful. Our leaders must set clear targets and hold our staff and professionals accountable to them. Third, community must demand honesty and transparency from our leaders about where they stand. There are those who argue, argue local government should avoid engaging in national issues. But federal policies on the economy, healthcare, education, the environment, immigration, civil rights, and drones profoundly affect our residents. Our leaders must recognize that there is an obligation to protect our neighbors, even when it's uncomfortable or not politically expedient. Summit's best days lie ahead, but they are not guaranteed. It will take all of us, engaged citizens and dedicated leaders, working together to ensure that we continue to thrive. We must elect leaders who align with our values, who listen, and who are unafraid to act decisively and boldly. It has been the honor of my life to represent the people of this incredible community who understand the power of our voice and the value of our vote. Thank you very, very much.
All right, well said, both of you. With that, I think we're going to wrap it up.
So moved.
Do I have a, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a merry Christmas and happy holidays, everyone.